Good evening colleagues, good evening everyone. Welcome to those in the public gallery, please be seated. Welcome to the March Meeting of Newcastle City Council. Members will see once again that standalone microphones will be used at this meeting, and from now on at all future meetings of the council. A mobile microphone is also available, and please indicate if you'd like to use that at the appropriate time. Tonight for voting, we again will be using the old system on the seat consoles. Can we have any apologies for absence please?
Thank you Lord Mayor, we've had apologies from councillors Allison, Beetsom, Hindmarsh, Anita Lower, Philip Lower, councillor McGinnis, Stokel Walker, Anne Wright.
Any other apologies? Okay, thank you. Can you hear that, sorry? Thank you councillor Hamilton. Does council agree the minutes of the meeting held on the 6th of February 2019? Thank you. Official announcements. Can I thank all members of staff and councillors for the tremendous support for the Red Box Project at the civic centre and in other council buildings? The National Red Box Project is a not-for-profit initiative which aims to support young women by providing red boxes filled with free period products to local schools and help to tackle period poverty. Thank you all for donating, and please keep on giving. This Friday is International Women's Day, and 2019 sees the third year of the This Car Can event from 5.30 tomorrow in Exhibition Park. This celebrates women of all abilities, but all genders are welcome. Two thousand seven hundred people have signed up, including the lady mayors, the city's largest female event so far, and in terms of national campaign, the largest This Car Can event in the country. So good luck to everyone taking part, and have a great night. And congratulations to all of our new Newcastle youth councillors, they were elected last month, and eleven out of the fourteen councillors and three of the four youth parliament are female members. So well done to everyone elected. And finally, as tonight's council meeting determines the council tax and budget, may I remind members that the guillotine will not be applied until nine pm this evening, rather than eight thirty. With regard to correspondence, does council agree to receive the correspondence from the Secretary of State for exiting the European Union and the Home Office? Okay. Petitions this evening? Sorry. I do apologise. So the next item then?
Yes, thank you, thank you Lord Mayor from the council. I'm beginning to feel like I'm sounding like a stuck record here, but the letter from the minister for the government is addressed to Mr Ritchie. Now, it's totally disrespectful to our chief executive. I really think we ought to be telling the government to get this right.
Thank you councillor Dunn. This was raised last month as well with regard to correspondence. Okay, we will follow that up, we will write to central government offices about this. Thank you for drawing our attention to it. With regard to petitions, there are three small petitions and one large petition this month. First, can I call on councillor Higgins to present a petition on behalf of ward residents calling for a bus shelter to be reinstated? No, could you go to the microphone please?
It's actually quite appropriate, Lord Mayor, that I'm presenting this petition this evening bearing in mind the weather outside, because it's about protecting my pensioners from adverse weather conditions. So basically, the petition says, "We the undersigned call for the reinstatement of the bus shelter at the intersection of Benwell Lane and Delville Road. This is a particularly exposed location, and the stop is used predominantly by the older residents of Shafto Court, Thomas Horsley House, and Benwell Hall Drive who rely heavily on public transport. Repeated past surveys have shown that exposure to adverse weather conditions at bus stops for as little as ten minutes can impact on the health of older people, and hence the importance and location of this particular shelter. We hope that you will treat our request sympathetically." Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you councillor Higgins. Can I call on Cabinet member councillor Ainsley to respond please?
Thank you councillor Higgins, I'll be very brief, and thank you to the petitioners regarding, you know, reinstating the bus shelter, and I will ask officers to look at this situation in light of the new bus shelter contract, and I'll report back to councillor Higgins and the lead petitioner. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Ainsley. Does council agree to receive the petition? Thank you. Next, may I call on councillor Haddut to present a petition on behalf of residents calling for a street litter bin to be reinstated?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Is this working?
Yes, it is.
"We the undersigned, being residents of Church Green, call on Newcastle City Council to reinstate a street litter bin or bins on our estate."
Thank you councillor Haddut. I call upon Cabinet member councillor Kemp to respond please.
Thank you councillor Haddut. Church Green is an estate consisting of culde sacs near the border with North Tyneside and near Newcastle United Academy and Northham University Coach Lane campus. On search in the systems, there are no recorded contacts from residents in this area, no requests for new bins or for bins to be removed, there are also no recorded reports about litter. As members know, the council took a budget decision to replace small volume litter bins with large volume litter bins across all wards in the city in response to significant budget cuts and to deliver the service in a more efficient way. Larger litter bins provide greater capacity but also can remove the need for manual lifting, so provide the required level of performance in line with the reduced amount of staffing and vehicles now available. The refreshed litter bin programme, whilst providing a reduced number of litter bins across the city, actually increased capacity to hold litter by over fifteen per cent. At the outset of the litter bin replacement programme, an operational decision was taken regarding the replacement of larger capacity litter bins based on a range of criteria, including proximity to shops, schools, larger buildings, high footfall areas, use of dog workers, local knowledge, proximity to bus stops, and main public through roads and thoroughfares. We have completed two subsequent reviews since then where changes have been made to litter bin locations. This has been a relocation of an existing bin, not increasing the number of bins. We agree that littering not only makes a place look messy and rundown, it is an offence under section eighty-seven of the Environmental Protection Act nineteen ninety. The council does not drop the litter, residents should take their waste home with them if they do not want to walk to a litter bin. I'll accept the petition, but I hope the response clarifies the position.
Thank you councillor Kemp. Does council agree to receive the petition? Thank you. Next, I will call on councillor Mendelson to present a petition on behalf of residents calling for a traffic-free trial at Haldain Bridge in Jezmen.
Petition, I'm reading the following petition. "Haldain Bridge in Jezmen is dangerous for walkers and cyclists owing to heavy traffic and narrow pavements. We urge the council to implement a motor-traffic-free trial on this bridge in twenty nineteen to separate the main driving and walking routes through the area. This change would greatly increase the area's safety for local people, and benefits could be evaluated in a trial."
Thank you councillor Mendelson. Councillor Ainsley, please respond.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you councillor Mendelson for presenting this petition on behalf of the petitioners, and I'll ask officers to look into the petition and to evaluate the benefits of a trial, and get back to you and the lead petitioner. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Ainsley. Does council agree to receive the petition? Thank you. Councillor Stone, yes?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Could councillor Ainsley also respond in her remarks to the suggestion that she has been emailing her friends in South Jezmen to oppose this development proposal? Can she confirm that's correct?
I don't think that is relevant for the moment for receiving the petition, so councillors agreed to receive the permission, and we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. Thank you. The final petition has more than two and a half thousand signatures, and is therefore the subject of a time-limited debate at full council. Can I invite Rachel Locke to present a petition regarding the proposals for the Brunswick Household Waste and Recycling Centre?
Thank you for considering this petition, which has now been signed by more than three thousand people, calling for Brunswick Household Waste and Recycling Centre to stay open. Nearly two-thirds of all fly tipping across England involves household waste. In two thousand and fourteen fifteen, clearing up the mess cost local authorities in England nearly fifty million pounds. And fly tipping in Newcastle, we know, is a major problem. There were nine thousand six hundred and sixteen incidents in Newcastle during twenty seventeen eighteen. Less than three per cent of these led to successful prosecution. Fly tipping and littering is synonymous with crime, increased crime rates and antisocial behaviour. It is a danger to public health and a blight on the landscape. It harms wildlife and contaminates land and water. Newcastle is one of the fastest-growing cities in the UK, with more than one thousand houses built last year alone. Much of this development is taking place around the Brunswick area. Despite this growth, there are still only three sites in the city where people can dispose of their household waste. Brunswick TIP gets around thirty per cent of the four hundred and seventy-five thousand annual visitors to the city's three tips. We are already in the midst of unprecedented levels of traffic congestion as a result of all the new housing developments on the outskirts of the city. If Brunswick TIP closes, more people will be forced to drive further afield to recycle their waste. At a time of growing demand, the council should be creating more opportunities for reducing waste, not taking them away. This centre provides a vital service that we, as taxpayers, should not be denied, we cannot afford to lose it. We need only to look to Cardiff, where in March last year, a Labour council closed one of three household waste and recycling centres. There were thirty-three fly tipping incidents reported to the local council in the eight months before the tip was closed. In the nine months following the closure, there were one hundred and seven reports of fly tipping. The council is now looking to open a new site. Surely there is a lesson to be learned here. The council has acknowledged the importance of changing attitudes towards waste. Closing a much-used recycling centre will promote the wrong attitude entirely. Newcastle Waste Commission's recent report set out how Newcastle City Council could become a world leader in waste reduction, with household waste recycling centres playing a bigger role in reducing waste and encouraging reuse. We were told the council was willing to listen to money-saving ideas that could keep Brunswick TIP open. We have heard how charging for garden waste collection and rubble disposal has kept the tip open to date. As elected members, it is your responsibility to come up with the answers, and it does not always have to be cut. The closure of Brunswick Household Waste and Recycling Centre will inevitably lead to more fly tipping, more negative behaviour, and an unattractive city to live and work in. Littering and fly tipping is a major environmental, social, and economic problem. If the Brunswick site closes, this city will face an even bigger problem, and it will be us, the taxpayer, that foots the bill. On behalf of the three thousand-plus local residents who have signed this petition, I urge you to think again about closing Brunswick Household Waste and Recycling Centre. Thank you.
Thank you, Miss Locke. I call on the Cabinet member councillor Kemp to respond, and propose a motion as to what action the council should decide to take.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. There, thank you Rachel, and to all those people who signed their petition. I know that we're all aware of the financial pressures we and many local authorities find themselves in with the swingeing and draconian cuts forced upon us by this Tory government. We need to save sixty million pounds over the next three years, which means making some difficult decisions affecting all of our services. With regards to the point that fly tipping is a blight on the local landscape and a source of pollution, I do of course agree with you. I would reaffirm the messages I have provided in this chamber and elsewhere previously, that being, that as a local authority, we take the issue of fly tipping extremely seriously, and our record of enforcement and prosecution is strong. For the fourth consecutive year, Deafrost Staps have identified Newcastle's environmental protection team as carrying out the second highest number of prosecutions for waste crime nationally, the highest in the north-east region, and the highest among the country's core cities. Newcastle City Council carried out ninety-one per cent of the total waste crime prosecutions in Tyne and Wear, and twelve per cent of waste crime prosecutions in England. The council also sees the highest number of vans from fly tippers in the region, and the second highest among the core cities, so I think we have a strong record. Forty-seven per cent of incidents recorded by Newcastle City Council involve some form of enforcement action, although an incident may involve a number of actions, such as investigation, seizure of the vehicles used in prosecution, and prosecution may involve multiple offenders and charges. In twenty seventeen eighteen, the city council took two hundred and forty prosecutions for waste crime, which is fifty-five per cent of all the prosecutions undertaken in the north-east of England. Nationally, only naught point two per cent of incidents resulted in court case. Fly tipping is rarely witnessed and is increasingly carried out by persons who intend to avoid detection. We know recycling centres are vitally important to our residents, and how we dispose of waste in the city is too. As a Labour-led authority, we initiated the Groundbreaking Waste Commission, the first in the UK to take a wholesale look at how we manage the waste we create, and look from a perspective of the city at all aspects of waste and environment. With regards to the Brunswick facility, we have also continually looked at ways to fund this centre, and we will continue to do so. We have been creative in the ways that we have looked to avoid hits upon our waste and recycling services. In twenty seventeen eighteen, Brunswick was planned to close, this was deferred. I believe that we've come up with ideas to date, by the diversion of rubble collections to more cost-effective disposal methods, and income generated from the Newcastle Garden Waste Service above the budget savings target in twenty eighteen nineteen, and has continued to defer the closure of Brunswick. There are no immediate plans to close Brunswick, its planned closure is set out in the Budget Consultation Document. The number of users quoted in the petition does not identify the number of users of our facilities that are not our residents, but from our responses we have received from outside our local authority, it is clear there are some considerable users that are not Newcastle residents and taxpayers. We have already agreed as a city council to introduce a local resident permit scheme in order that the users of the city household waste recycling centres are Newcastle residents. I confirm that recycling centres are a key part of services to tackle waste more effectively and efficiently in the city. This includes minimising waste and increasing reuse and recycling, launching a city-wide campaign to tackle littering and fly tipping, working with communities to improve their neighbourhoods as well as greater enforcement and monitoring to ensure waste is disposed of properly, and this is why a full service review is underway. I propose that the council notes this petition and feeds the content of it into the ongoing review.
Thank you councillor Kemp. This proposal that somebody, sorry councillor King. First of all, I need a second to the proposal of councillor Kemp. Seconded by councillor Dunn, okay. Do you wish to speak councillor Dunn, or reserve the right to speak? Okay. Councillor King? Can you explain what the amendment is please, and whether you have a second? Could you go to the microphone please?
Well Mayor, this is a petition, not a motion.
But you have proposed a motion to...
No, I've proposed to note the petition.
Okay, I'll just hand you over to the legal officer, just a moment please.
Lord Mayor, just to be clear, as part of the process where we have a large-scale petition, it is obviously the case that the member has to propose how to deal with the petition, and I think the cabinet member explained in his speech that he was proposing that the petition be noted, and it be fed into the ongoing review. If the cabinet member can confirm that that is the correct understanding?
I can, John, that's exactly what I suggested.
Okay, thank you. And that's been seconded by councillor Dunn, and so it's now for the councillor to move whichever amendment he proposes.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Brunswick Recycling Centre is a well-used and cherished local service based in Castle Ward. Many local residents have made it plain to me that they feel let down by this administration over the plans to close the service. A local government association, LGA, has highlighted the cost of cleaning up fly tipping. The LGA gave the example of costs generated by almost a million incidents of illegal fly tipping recorded by councils last year, which is latest figures put at fifty-seven million pounds. The LGA said there was a fly tipping epidemic, but each time someone was convicted for more serious offences, it still results in council taxpayers having to pick up the bill. This administration has a bold waste increase programme. Step one, stuff rubbish leaflets through everyone's doors, telling them fly tipping is bad, which we...
That's the focus.
Which we cut to fund the staying open of Brunswick Recycling Centre. Step two, reduce access for waste disposal by closing Brunswick Recycling Centre, increasing fly tipping. Maybe Mr Forbes and his administration is taking classes in the clear thinking from the new doyen of the Labour Party, Jamie Driscoll, and his recent Brexit masterclass. An important concept in my profession, medicine, is prevention. It is well-known that it is far cheaper to prevent a disease than to treat one. I have previously asked officers to give an estimate regarding the increase in fly tipping if Brunswick is closed. I've had no reply. How can we be sure that closing the recycling centre will improve the finances of the city without such information? I urge the council to follow our recommendation on this issue. Our amendment would be, "We call for a cost-neutral options analysis to be presented to overview and scrutiny as part of a properly facilitated consultation, accepting the closure as an a priori assumption of any planning fundamentally diminishes the quality of any forthcoming discussions on the future and provision of this service." Thank you.
Thank you councillor King. The second... This is, although councillor King has said it's an amendment, this is a comment that he's entitled to have with regard to this being presented to the council. And so does councillor Ashby, but...
Here, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Ashby?
Yes, I'd like to second the referral of this to scrutiny. It seems to me that we are coming up, or the council, the administration's coming up with the wrong answer to the wrong question. If we want to get people to recycle more, we should not be closing down their options for recycling. If we want to avoid fly tipping, we should not be increasing the opportunity for people to fly tip. And if we are wanting to keep people from outside of Newcastle from using these facilities, then we should have some kind of recognition facility so that we can differentiate between local people and people from outside of the city, and the suggestions being made of some sort of permit system seems to me to be a good way forward. It seems to me that the savings are not huge, we are told there are no immediate plans, but then, last time I think I heard there was no immediate plans, two days later, there were immediate plans. And it seems that what we should be doing is taking a much more view of this thing in the round, including taking some cognizance of our concerns about the cleaning up of the fly tipping that will inevitably result from this, and also the increase in air pollution that will result in people having to drive further distances in order to recycle materials. So for all of these reasons, I support the referral of this petition to scrutiny, rather than just taking note of it.
Thank you councillor Ashby, just a moment please councillor Kemp. Councillor Kemp, you have the right to respond to the debate.
Debate is an interesting term, Lord Mayor. Oh God, you just can't help yourself, can you, you annoying man? So can I just make something clear that appears to have passed by the ears of the new focus newsletters being written on the note? So what I said during my response was very clear, that there is an ongoing review of the whole service. So it strikes me that you're choosing to predetermine the outcome of a service review. I have said very clearly that this petition, the views expressed in this petition will be fed into the overall service review. We don't know yet what the conclusion of that review is, we don't know how many centres we will have, we don't know exactly where they'll be, because we haven't concluded the work yet. Now obviously, if the opposition actually had any creativity or any political nous, they would have an alternative, rather than suggesting the same thing we're doing, which is, there's an ongoing review. This is going to be fed into that, and clearly, when there is a proposal, there is a due process, and due process is actually, strangely enough, that it would go to overview and scrutiny if the work programme is agreed by the chair. So it's a bit of a follyed little amendment, trying to get some grandstanding by a ward member, as opposed to actually looking at a strategic service, but you don't do strategy, do you?
Thank you councillor Kemp. Can I ask, does council agree with the petition as proposed and the... Can I ask, does councillors agree with the petition as proposed and the way that the discussion has gone with councillor Kemp's proposal on review? Sorry, can we go back to the proposals which differed, to the amendment which differed to the proposal that councillor Kemp's proposed? Do we have agreement on... If it's not agreed, then we do have to have a vote on this. So the first vote will be on the amendment which the two... Okay, okay. Just a moment, can you wait please councillor Higgins?
I will ask the legal officer to explain, thank you.
Thank you lord mayor. As I understood it from councillor Kemp's proposal, he suggested that the petition should be noted and fed into the overall review, whereas the amendment proposed by the opposition members was that it should be, there should be a cost-neutral options analysis which would be presented to overview and scrutiny as part of a properly facilitated consultation, so... Lord mayor, I think there might be issues about the overlap between the two proposals, but we do have a situation where one way is being presented by the cabinet member and as they are permitted under the large petition schemes rules, the opposition members have suggested a variant of that, which is an amendment to the original proposal, and then if it's not agreed, it needs to be voted on first to see if that's being changed, and then if it's not carried, we go back to the original proposal.
Thank you. Can I then ask for a vote on the amendment please? And if it's a name vote, ten? Okay, thank you. Be ready to press your buttons then please on the amendment. Thank you, the amendment has not been carried, so we go back to the original proposal, do we need a vote on the original proposal? Sorry, is it agreed? No, can I just then ask, you have a colleague down here saying you want to vote, could I just ask, do you agree it or... Thank you very much, the proposals by cabinet member councillor Kemp are agreed, thank you. We move on to item number six, which are public questions and addresses. There are two public questions to council this evening, from Andrew Gray that will be taken together. Could I invite Mr Gray to come to the lectern please to pose a question, thank you.
Thank you lord mayor, thank you councillors for giving me the opportunity to ask a question, or indeed two linked questions about the budget proposal to relocate the East End Library and Customer Service Centre into the YHN Customer Service Centre on Shields Road. My questions are in connection with both the future of the library service and with the proposal as a revenue saving measure. The proposal has been agreed by cabinet and it's obviously before you this evening. After the library opening hours, the East End Library opening hours were cut from 58 to 23 hours per week in May 2016, the East End Library visitor statistics showed a collapse of visits, falling by 84% from the same period in the previous year, that's taking a comparable quarter. If the Shields Road building will in future house both city council and YHN customer services alongside library stock and library services, could the cabinet member or somebody on behalf of the cabinet member, because I think she's not here, please outline in more detail how this shared space will work? What measures will be taken to provide sufficient space for library services and library users and to prevent a repeat of the 84% reduction we saw in 2016? My second question relates to the budgetary saving aspect, will rental income from the vacant space within the current East End Pool and Library building accrue to the council or will it be made available to the East End Pool and to Greenwich Leisure Limited? Thank you.
Thank you Mr Gray. I call upon councillor McCarthy to respond please.
Thank you lord men, thank you Mr Gray for bringing your two questions along this evening. You obviously understand that we've been on a challenging journey, forced on us by Tory coalition austerity. We've to make revenue savings of up to a million pounds, so part of our budget proposals will be to deliver a repurposed footprint in four locations across the city, which is helping to prevent citywide library closures. And we are doing this building on good practice of similar models that are in other parts of the city, and particularly in the West End and in the Outer West. We, in answer to your second question, we're handing our lease back to the East End leisure operator so that GLL can provide enhanced dry space and community gym facilities. As the council currently pays for the running of both sites on Shields Road, clearly the council will be making a saving by no longer paying for rent and utilities at the East End Pool site, only paying for the new proposed site. We are working with Your Homes Newcastle, who are currently in the East End building so that they can relocate their back office functions, which also releases space for library users and frontline customer services. The ground floor space is being opened up by removing the cashier's desk and interview rooms, all except one. Designs are being repurposed to provide, and this answers your question about the amount of space in the library, Andrew, 34 bays of adults shelving and nine bays of children's shelving, which compares to the current stock of 46 and 10, so fairly similar for children's, although it is about a quarter of a reduction really on adults. A new shared reception pod will be installed for use by the community hub and library staff and YHN staff, and the public toilet will be, the public accessible toilet will be retained. The first floor will stay as it is with the layout of the rooms as they currently stand with an open plan office and staff facilities. The community room is being changed back into a public space, which enables PC access, really, really important, given the need for residents to access digital support. Across the two floors, we'll offer the same number of public PCs as we currently have at East End Library. Passenger lift will remain in place to provide access to the first floor, making it all accessible. Library and information officers will work in a transformational way to spend 50% of their time out in libraries and community hubs, providing professional support to colleagues in buildings such as the East End. This will include supporting events and activities, improving stock selection, using the stock ensuring consistency in the offer that is made across the city. We think that this, by co-locating, this will encourage new people, a new group of people to use the library who might not have visited otherwise. I think we're confident that this proposal, this refreshed, repurposed building will provide, albeit as you say on a smaller footprint, an equal digital offer, similar library facilities and new customer service points for the public to use. Thank you, thank you lord mayor.
Thank you councillor McCarthy. Mr Gray, you can respond for up to one minute, thank you.
Thank you lord mayor and thank you councillor McCarthy. Thank you for the detailed answer, I think it might have been helpful if some more detail was in the budget documents, because it's really not clear what is going on in them and the details of the kind of spaces you're making up. Clearly it is a smaller footprint and the East End Library was a purpose-built library, it's under 20 years old, many of us remember the promises made to Heaton and Biker when our local libraries were closed to replace it with the East End Library. So it's very shocking to see it so early on in its career as a library being reduced and repurposed, and while the Shields Road location may be in many ways a good location, the ambience of a library, the atmosphere of a library and the atmosphere of that quite distinctive build that is the East End Library is very important providing library services. We don't want to see a repeat of the kind of reductions, that 84% reduction we saw a few years ago. In terms of the use of the space, the vacant space, clearly you are allowing GLL, the Greenwich Leisure Limited, to expand into that space. I see from the open access data the council makes available that £406,000 was given in capital funding to Greenwich Leisure Limited in the, between April and November, on top of the £2.7 million loan that's in the accounts for last year. So I do think that this looks very much like a sweetener for a failing outsourcing deal as much as it is about providing the library services that our people need. Thank you.
Thank you Mr Gray, thank you. Before I continue with the agenda, can I just say, my attention's been drawn to the fact that when members choose to speak or interject from their seats, that if they believe it is something worthwhile, then it's worth going to the microphone, because not everyone's hearing what's being said. If it's not worthwhile, I think then members should not say what they are thinking. I do hope that discipline will be adhered to, particularly during this coming debate on the budget. So anyway, item number seven.
Lord mayor, the next item is on the budget. The opposition has received some information which suggests that council tax demand notices may have already been printed and be ready to send out. I'm not sure whether this information is correct or not, but I'm asking the leader of council whether he can give any indication as to whether or not that is the case. Obviously we'd be concerned if they were all printed and ready to go before we've had our debate, but if he can reassure us, that would be very good as far as we're concerned. Thank you lord mayor.
The council has a legal duty to issue these notices by the length of, on March, I don't know what the process is and how far it's gone down, is there anyone here that can respond to that query? Councillor Dunn, thank you.
Lord mayor, council, obviously I've had no prior notice of that particular question, and the normal procedure for the sending out council tax bills would be following the decision of city council, and certainly no bills have yet been sent out.
Thank you councillor Dunn, thank you. So item number seven, shaping our future together. I call upon the leader of council, Nick Forbes, to move the report seconded by councillor McCarthy.
Thank you lord mayor. If we look back to last autumn, members will recall the prime minister making the bold claim that austerity is over. Tonight, we gather to bear witness to the continued impact of that lie. Austerity is not far from over. In the next three years, this council must save a further £60 million, taking the total amount saved since 2010 to £327 million. That's equivalent to almost £2,500 for every household in the city. Tory-led austerity is far from over, and I fear there may yet be more bad news coming to us in the years ahead. The budget presented for agreement tonight is one which includes difficult decisions, but also one which seeks to protect the most vulnerable and grow our great north city. But there's no avoiding the fact that over the last eight years, first the coalition government and then the conservative government have maintained a ruthless and relentless policy to target the impact of austerity on the most deprived areas of the country, while Tory voting areas have been relatively protected. For too long, this government has relied on councils such as Newcastle to deliver the world-class public services our residents rely on, but forced us to do this on a shoestring. And this problem is not unique to our city, and the challenges that we face have prompted national outrage. Over the last 12 months, we've seen councils sign up to the Breaking Point campaign, uniting local government in motions such as the one passed here just a few months ago, in protest at the austerity devastating our communities. The Breaking Point campaign makes it clear that Tory cuts mean that by 2020, councils will have lost 60 pence out of every one pound of government funding since 2010. It makes clear that last year councils were forced to spend an extra £800 million on vital services to protect children, and with an aging population and growing demand, our adult social care sector alone faces a funding gap nationally of £3.5 billion. And the Breaking Point campaign calls on the prime minister to put her money where her mouth is and demonstrate that austerity really is over. As is always the case in Newcastle, we've done our best to stand up to austerity, and I know, we all know, that this hasn't been easy. We've innovated, we've reimagined and reinvented ourselves in every way we can, and this has delivered significant savings and efficiencies. But despite our best efforts, the scale of government funding reductions and increasing demand for services mean there is only so much more that we can do. It feels like every year, we're running harder and harder just to try and stand still. And the pressures and demands facing councils are numerous and growing. By some estimates, there are nearly 1,300 statutory duties on local authorities, but this figure is almost certainly lower than the day-to-day reality of what staff in this organisation do. The list includes everything from inspecting restaurants to inspecting the occasional ship, from licensing bars to licensing caravan parks and holiday sites, from maintaining highways to maintaining cattle grids, from dealing with the dangers of drink in our night-time economy to, yes, dealing with distressed donkeys, that is one of our statutory responsibilities. A look through that list will show that many day-to-day services that government now simply refuses to fund adequately, and we all see the impact on our libraries, on our buses and in the homes of our most vulnerable. And we add to these costs the policies that the government announces but never fully funds. For example, when they claim pay awards for staff but expect us to pick up the bill from our own budgets. The difficult truth this government refuses to acknowledge is that need and demand for local services vastly outweighs the funding that's available. Nowhere is this demand more pressing, the disconnect more worrying than on our care service. This country is facing a care crisis. We know that our councils and our NHS are struggling to cope, but while the government occasionally brows to pressure and tries to fool us into thinking it's handing out enough extra cash for the NHS, and by the way, nowhere near £350 million a week, there is no long-term solution presented for social care. In Newcastle and across the country, the cost of care rises annually while funding shrinks. We look for new ways to innovate or share costs, and we know that if we don't, it will add more pressure... add more pressure onto the already overstretched NHS, but there is only so much that we can do. When austerity first started, the focus was on adult social care and the crisis facing in particular the elderly. The government's answer to this was to tax local residents more rather than thinking about the longer-term reform that the system urgently needed. Over recent years, though, the demands of keeping our children safe have added to these pressures. Our children's services teams look after some of the most vulnerable in our city. Their actions can shape the life of a child for the rest of its adult life. And this Tory government has made turning a blind eye to human suffering one of its few successes. I want to talk a bit tonight about those children, many of whom we, as councillors, are corporate parents for. I want to think about a fourteen-year-old girl who, right now, is looked after by dedicated council officers. Let's call her Claire. Claire is with us after a failed adoption, the very thought of which should be heartbreaking enough to make anybody want to offer properly funded support. Claire has been, through no fault of her own, denied the loving upbringing most people in this council chamber will take for granted. She self-harms. She turns to alcohol. She has behind her a broken home and in front of her an uncertain future where there is a risk of sexual exploitation. This isn't a made-up case. This is not a generic description. This is a real girl in our care right now. Her mental health is understandably challenging, and she can no longer attend regular school. Any dedicated parent would want what is best for this child. We send her to the best care services we can. It isn't in Newcastle, and the cost is seven thousand five hundred pounds a week for one girl. Her brother is also in our care. He also needs a specialist place, and doing the right thing for him costs four thousand five hundred pounds a week. Over the course of this year, we will spend more than six hundred pounds just on their education. And elsewhere in this city is a fourteen-year-old boy, let's call him John. He's also a looked-after child. He spent his early years in a household surrounded by drugs. The family members who should have been looking after him were instead abusive to him. He was beaten, locked in cupboards, deprived of food. As a result, John struggled with school. He's bounced from home to home because he struggles with his behaviour. And finally, the courts intervened, and John now needs secure accommodation with specially-trained male staff to look after him. Our city, stepping in to help John, needs seven thousand eight hundred pounds a week, more than four hundred thousand pounds a year, to give him what his family would not. That's just three children looked after in this city as I speak. A million pounds of care a year for just three children. Where does the money come from, for this? Eight hundred and forty-seven households. That's how many band-A properties need to pay their council tax just to ensure three children are not abandoned. Three children. It wasn't always like this. Before the coalition government stepped in with the start of austerity in 2010, government provided the money to pay for support like this. And then came the cuts. Surely you would think ministers can see how failing to act just creates more expensive problems further down the line, but apparently not. It's no wonder that last month, children's charities across the UK came together to demand government action. They spoke out because the funding available for children's services has fallen by a third per child in England since 2010, a direct consequence of the austerity policies of first the coalition government and then the Tories. Councils collectively are facing a three billion pound funding gap for children's services by 2025, and the situation in Newcastle is just as dire and pressing as it is anywhere else. Now, Lord Mayor, some will claim that there are easy answers. Some will claim that if we just tweaked our budget, we'd be by some miracle the only council in the country not facing these crises. And residents here have a clear choice ahead of them when considering where the blame lies for this. They can listen to those facing cheap headlines with no workable alternative, or they could listen to the chief executive of the Children's Society, who told the government that councils face a toxic cocktail of funding cuts and soaring demand for help that is making it near impossible for councils to offer vital early support. And I want members to have his warning in mind when they consider this budget. If we cancel a proposed reduction in one or more of the public areas of council activity, we face having to find that saving from the services which support those who are more vulnerable in our city. Difficult decisions simply cannot be avoided. I am proud that this council has always sought to find new ways of delivering services and fresh ideas to secure even more scarce funding. The opposition criticised the civic centre refurbishment. The work going on round about us is ultimately paid for entirely by the organisations renting space from us now and in the future. And not only is every penny covered by rental income, the savings generated by the work mean that over the next two decades, we free up more than thirty million pounds to go towards essential services. Where are the opposition ideas to fill that funding gap that it would have created? And at this time of year, another battle regularly takes place, the battle between financial common sense versus the cheap political shot. And our critics will tell you that all the pain can be avoided if we just use up some of our reserves. They will suggest ways around the cuts by looking at the funds we've set aside for emergencies. But if we don't take difficult decisions, if we just use up savings and put off the pain for another year, we will find ourselves bankrupt. Difficult decisions today mean we avoid the mistakes of Northamptonshire County Council, the ground zero of local authority austerity. The failures of that council should remain a warning to all of us. The council simply refused to take the difficult decisions, and as a result, they went bust. The government has had to step in. The authority is being abolished, facilities are being closed, and there's now an atmosphere of fear and uncertainty for local residents and staff. The lesson is clear: local communities suffer when councils fail to face up to the reality of austerity. So instead, we look to find new ways to take us forward. More than three thousand five hundred residents took part in our budget consultation, and I'd like to thank each and every one of them for taking the time. The road ahead may get bumpy, but by working together, we are collectively shaping a great city with a bright future. And the budget proposed for agreement tonight does include some difficult decisions. There's no getting away from that, no matter what some in the chamber might say. Yes, we will have to look at reduced opening times for libraries. It's not an easy decision, and one we've previously put off because we know the impact of it. This, by the way, despite it being proposed as a budget amendment five years ago by the Liberal Democrats. The alternative is to close libraries. By changing the opening hours, we can protect community infrastructure as best we can in the face of this Tory onslaught. And while we initially proposed reducing the shop mobility service from six days to three days a week, we listened to feedback and increased it to four days a week. It's still a difficult decision, I know that, but it's one the council has no choice to take if we are to keep services going. And I hope that users of that service will agree, it's better to have some service than no service at all. During the course of the budget consultation, the economic landscape has shifted ever so slightly in our favour, and we've therefore seen an extra one point six million made available in one-off funds. Now, that's money that we can't guarantee will be available next year, and clearly only the economically illiterate would seek to fund day-to-day services from it year in, year out. So instead, we're proposing to use it to mitigate the worst impacts of austerity and to use it to invest in our city. And that means proudly launching a citywide behaviour change campaign to tackle littering and fly tipping. This Newcastle Labour group was elected on a manifesto promise to clean things up, and today we are delivering on that promise. I understand that council will tonight be presented with a budget amendment which proposes to scrap eight hundred thousand pounds from a spring clean and anti-littering campaign. It's incredible that anybody would think to turn down this much-needed cleaning up fund. We know that Tory austerity has hit our city hard, and I think Newcastle deserves this extra pick-me-up. Why anybody would campaign against cleaning our streets is a mystery to me. But the Tory damage to Newcastle isn't just visible on our streets. If you look at homes across the city, you'll find families devastated and ignored by this government. Newcastle was a testbed for the horrors of universal credit. But when our city highlighted the impact of it, the government closed its ears. And as a council, I'm proud that we did our bit to support those families who are affected, though with ever fewer resources. So we propose to use some of this one-off funding to help pair our literally lifesaving welfare advice services for the next round of government cuts. We know that welfare rights, social care and NHS interventions are all linked, and while we look to bring services together and really transform how this city stands united, we will use some of this one-off funding to help the advice team through a difficult time. We'll also use some of this funding to embark on the next step of our plan to promote Newcastle as a dementia-friendly city with an awareness campaign, because if our city is truly to thrive, it has to be one in which a good quality of life extends to all. But clearly, one point six million will not go far. With sixty million going over the next three years, we face little option but to look at council tax increases. In fact, government assume in their financial calculations to the money available to local authorities that we will increase council tax by the maximum amount available to us. They've more or less instructed us to put up council tax. And alongside council tax comes the adult social care precept, the government-created charge intended to get local households to pay for services which, for generations, were paid for by central government. The adult social care crisis currently facing our city and our country is one made in Downing Street, but which government expects to be paid for by residents in your street. So how do we move on from these challenges? I suspect Whitehall, Lord Mayor, will only realise the mess it's created too late. Right now, while we're starting to witness the collapse of many public services across a whole range of areas, national government appears to be devoting its entire political bandwidth to Brexit, and as a result, is simply unable to engage with us on the big policy and financial challenges that we're grappling with. But while Brexit comes ever closer, we know that local government finance is creaking at the seams. The money that we once got from government, the Revenue Support Grant that paid for day-to-day services, is almost gone. And just as we've invested and innovated to reform services, so must we now apply the same approach to funding them. If we grow our city, we don't just provide the opportunity for a good job and a fulfilling career, we also provide the local tax base that will pay for the services that keep us going. We invest in our city to save our city. This council spends forty-five percent of its budget with Newcastle-based organisations and sixty-seven percent with North East-based organisations. That means we spend over one hundred and eighty million pounds on goods and services with organisations in Newcastle and two hundred and sixty-nine million in the North East every year through our procurement processes. This, Lord Mayor, is community wealth building in action. We've been doing it for years. It's not new, and we will continue to do so. We're also ensuring that hundreds of our council staff are set to benefit from the local authorities' continued commitment to paying all its employees a living wage. From April, the council will pay its lowest-paid staff a salary which will match with the real living wage rate of pay. This means approximately six hundred and fifty members of staff will be paid at least nine pounds per hour from April 2019. In addition, a total of one thousand four hundred staff will receive an increase in wages above two percent as a result of moving towards a new pay structure. It follows on from Newcastle being the first council to set up a fairness commission, and to use a Newcastle living wage as a result. And this is a hugely significant step forward in achieving social justice for some of the lowest-paid workers in our city. And as a council, we're also playing our part to keep the city growing by helping more than one thousand new homes to be built, the highest level for thirty years. But growing our city means addressing all of that and yet continuing to do more, to push ourselves further to invest. Two years ago, the council backed that view by creating the Great North City Fund. It is there to ensure Newcastle remains a destination city despite austerity. And I cannot stress enough to colleagues tonight, if you want to continue to help the elderly, if you want to continue safeguarding children, if you want to continue ensuring our streets are clean, if you want to continue ensuring our libraries are open, we have to grow our city's economy to pay for it. That makes it all the more incredible that some would suggest we take our eye off this ball and divert the one-off cash that brings events to our city to spend elsewhere. What will they do when the money runs out? Every time we see a major event in the city, I've almost finished, Lord Mayor, every time we see a major event in the city, every time thousands of visitors flock to a rugby match or a concert, what we're seeing is the city supporting the businesses and jobs that give us a regular income. And if you cut investment in the city, you cut investment in the most vulnerable. The link is that direct.
Thank you very much, councillor Forbes.
That's why...
I'm sorry, councillor Forbes, you have had twenty-two minutes.
Lord Mayor, it's traditional in the budget speech for the Lord Mayor to allow a level of flexibility for the two opening speakers, and I'd be grateful if you grant me that on this occasion, given that I've only got one page to go.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So, the Centre for Cities think-tank has looked at the evidence and concluded that council cuts have hit the North East hardest. The National Audit Office have warned that not only are local authorities struggling to juggle high demands and cost pressures, but that those who simply use up reserves for a temporary fix are likely to go bust. And the Public Accounts Committee has shared that short-term cash injections are doing nothing to solve the extremely worrying position that councils find themselves in. That's why we have a vision and a plan to see us through the years ahead. A vision and a plan to protect the most vulnerable while prioritising inclusive growth, a vision and a plan that transforms and innovates public service delivery using new technologies while retaining services in the public sector rather than outsourcing, a vision and a plan for working with partners, making the best use of every pound spent in the public sector, and a vision and a plan to pilot our city and its citizens through the unprecedented times we find ourselves in. This budget helps to deliver on this vision and this plan, and I commend it to council.
Thank you, councillor Forbes. I call upon councillor McCarthy to second. Thank you, councillor McCarthy. I also suggested, I know you're serious, but I also suggested that we move to microphones as well. If you leave me to negotiate my way through the banter that goes on, I assure you that I will be fair, I will, will be decisive, because the thing is, we have many, many people wishing to speak on the budget, and what I wish to do is to allow everyone the chance who wishes to express it to speak on the budget, but please be respectful. You may not agree with each other, but that's the way it is. But what we must do is conduct ourselves in a proper manner. We have the public watching us, this goes on to YouTube. The way that people perceive this council will be determined on your behaviour. Thank you. Can I call on now councillor Ferguson to respond to the report and move amendments, seconded by councillor Hall? Thank you. Thank you.
I believe I've heard a bit of a story this evening about some things that have happened with this budget that don't really stand up to my reading of it, unfortunately. But before I get there, I think it's fair to say that in this chamber we're fond of looking backwards, so I thought I'd start with a little bit of a history lesson. The year is 1997. A bright, fresh, third-way politician steps into Downing Street, and for the first few years, that Labour administration promises fiscal restraint. But soon, the lure of spending money becomes too great. The use of the private finance initiative vastly expands, pushing government spending off balance sheet and into the future. This council will spend an estimated £47.5 million in 2018-19 alone. Sensible restrictions on banks are relaxed, precipitating a disastrous financial collapse that requires £500 billion of government funding. When voters reacted at the ballot box, it was a Lib Dem MP, David Laws, who was greeted with Liam Byrne's shocking note: 'I'm afraid to tell you, there's no money left.' Much has been made in this chamber about austerity and the actions of the government from 2010 onwards, without ever acknowledging the circumstances before it, or indeed that the Labour Party supported it, and that Jeremy Corbyn is happy to ply ahead with £7 billion of welfare cuts, as per the 2017 manifesto. I want to be abundantly clear, this council has choices this evening, and whatever the protests otherwise from those opposite, it is Labour's choices that create this budget and the impact that arises from it. The opposition argues that this is a budget with deep-seated structural and conceptual flaws, that this is a budget that fails even on its own terms, and that this is a budget that our amendments demonstrate is the Labour administration's choice, however they may want to paint it. When I first stood to speak in this chamber, I asked where our performance indicators and organisational targets were. I expressed a deep unease that I was not clear on the Labour administration's vision and strategic direction, although I hear that it's abundantly in evidence this evening. In the intervening time, unfortunately, my concern has only solidified. We have been assured that successive budgets would not salami slice, but in the absence of a clear sense of direction, how can that be possible? There is no vision, no idea of what local government in this city looks like in the 2020s and beyond. I challenge individual cabinet members this evening in this debate to tell me what their portfolio area will look like in three, five and 10 years' time. Is there a credible narrative that can be put forward? A strategy requires a sense of direction and a roadmap of getting there. A list of priorities only tells us what we can expect to be cut last. If all we hear this evening are helpless complaints about the external environment and the actions of the government in Westminster, then we know there is no vision. The clearest roadmap we have, in fact, is this budget and the basis for planning it introduces. But is this a case of the financial tail wagging the forward-planning dog? Councils are not unique amongst organisations in this country for being subject to the policy whims of MPs in Westminster, yet countless organisations across the country are able to provide a strategic direction anyway that adapts and changes over time as any good strategy should. This council prefers to cut big and cut often without ever articulating an end goal. This budget is based on two mistaken assumptions. First, that Jeremy Corbyn will come galloping over the hill on his charger very soon, swoop into government and return local government funding to levels seen in the 2000s. And second, that Newcastle Labour doesn't need to worry at the ballot box. Both are fundamentally incorrect. Local government has experienced crippling cuts, on that we can agree. Westminster likes to push problems outwards without considering the financial or practical consequences, on that we can also agree. But the idea that the only possible response is to be reactive to circumstance whilst we wait and hope does a deep disservice to the residents of this city, many of whom have long since given up that Labour will prioritise a proactive approach. But even if you disagree with me on these points, and I'm sure that many opposite will, it is the opposition's clear view that this is a budget that fails on its own terms. Much is made in the report of the Newcastle Fairness Commission. The opposition agrees that it's especially when times are tough that fairness is most important. How does this budget stack up against those lofty principles? Fair share. The reserves position continues to improve beyond the forecast. An estimated £22 million is now expected compared to only a couple of years ago. Is it better to have this money funding vital services or filling council coffers? Fair play. Is that how anyone reads the integrated impact assessments and look at those and feel that, yeah, all right, you know, we've got those very clear impacts on people with predicted characteristics, but we're going to go ahead anyway? Fair go. If libraries and museums shorten their opening hours or close entirely uncertain days, would we really say that residents and families have proper opportunities to participate? Fair say. Is it a fair hearing to announce a savage cut to shop mobility without even consulting with users? Is this what Labour means when they say 'for the many, not the few'? Better to have some consultation in first than to see Labour take the credit for something that they've cut. Or what about the concerned residents who have submitted the Brunswick petition this evening? To be clear, it is Labour that presupposes the outcome of the review. If you say it's going to close and you write it down that it's going to close, it's pretty clear you want it to close. Councillor McCarthy once glibly suggested that we would do well to read Labour's papers more thoroughly, the better to unwaveringly support them. But as I read in The Chronicle this evening, it's clear to me that it's councillors McCarthy and Forbes who would do well to read our amendments. Every single one of our amendments on services commits to an options analysis or consultation that was sadly lacking the first time around. Our amendments seek to provide a year in which Labour can redo their working and submit their thinking again. We contend that the Labour administration have not fully considered all options. The only reason we would end up back in square one next year is if Labour squander the opportunity we're providing them with to think again. We sincerely back the principle of behaviour change on fly tipping, but we are unconvinced that this will be effective as a result of one-off funding. One-off ward spring cleans may sound good on the doorstep, but they don't replace proper, consistent action on littering in our city. These actions should be a firm feature of a proper waste strategy. The Great North City Fund, hardly an emergency reserve, was announced to create fanfare in April 2017, but has been little utilised since. We should redirect it towards urgent need, as we suggest. If Labour votes down this amendment this evening, I challenge the portfolio holder to bring forward an itemised plan accounting for how the Great North City Fund will be spent to overview and scrutiny, or Finance and Budget Scrutiny Subcommittee. This budget is made up of Labour's choices. Our amendments go some way to giving the administration time to think again. If our amendments are voted down, I should remind you that it is Labour candidates on the doorstep that will need to look Brunswick tip users, Blue Badge holders, shop mobility users and the community and volunteering sector in the eye and say, 'We chose to cut the service you value.' We call on Labour to itemise the £8.5 million profit from parking income and fines and tell us how that's spent. If they decide to introduce charging as part of their air quality plans, we call on Labour to account for exactly how they intend to invest any new revenue arising from charging introduced as part of those plans. We demand Labour pledge to match the Liberal Democrats' new policy on an efficient use of reserves, ensuring their timely and efficient usage for the benefit of all residents by placing a presumption of a time limit for their use. And we challenge Labour to provide more information on their capital investment strategy, including accounting for why so much funding goes to the city centre. We need a vision for the future, a vision that only the Lib Dems in this city seem willing to provide. A vision that makes the best of devolution, builds shared services, genuinely develops partnership working to meet objectives, prioritises proactivity over reactivity and uses reserves in a prudent, timely and efficient manner. A vision that places local government at the heart of facilitating organisations and stakeholders to work together for the benefit of the whole city. A vision fundamentally rooted in the communities that Labour seems to have forgotten. This is a Labour administration, unfortunately, that prioritises leaflets over services, PR hits over proper delivery and underutilised reserves over revenue spending. The Liberal Democrats demand better for this city. Thank you, Lord Mayor. I see no need to take any more time because councillor Forbes took plenty enough already.
Thank you, councillor Ferguson. Councillor Hall, you seconded the—
Seconded.
Are you reserving the right to speak? Okay, thank you.
May I remind members that Understanding Order 17F, Section 6, the budget proposals and the five amendments will be subject of a single debate, and then each amendment will be voted on in turn. I have a number of members who have already indicated they wish to speak, and I will take these speakers one at a time, and I'll mention the next person following on so that they can be ready at their nearest microphone. Thank you. Councillor Greenough, please, followed by councillor Haddad.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. In local government, we've been on the front line of delivering services which people rely on. We provide the support and enrich our communities on a day-to-day basis. And I think it's therefore important that we first put into context the budget that we find ourselves with. By 2020, the LGA estimate that local authorities will face a reduction in core funding of nearly £16 billion since 2010. As councillor Forbes said, this equates to 60 pence out of every one pound the government used to provide. That's the reality of the brutal cuts that we face today, and there will be an £8 billion funding gap by 2025 across the local government. And we know that these cuts have been disproportionately allocated across the country, with areas like Newcastle shoulder an unfair burden. By 2020, we'll have lost £327 million from our budget, that's almost £2,500 per household. This has undoubtedly had an impact on the ability for the council to deliver the services that our residents deserve. And without a Labour government, there is no ending site for these cuts. And residents know that they cannot trust the members opposite to deliver for our city. They propped up the government that started these cuts and did nothing to defend Newcastle. Despite the challenges we face in Newcastle, we have tried to be innovative and deliver lasting change for residents. And I think a real success story for this council is the delivery of affordable homes, and this has been recognised nationally by Shelter, who have stated that Newcastle was amongst the best-performing local authorities we investigated when it comes to overall supply of affordable housing and comfortably exceeded its own targets for affordable housing delivery. In Denton West End, we have seen this with the Garth development, where we've had affordable houses, bungalows and apartments. We're also delivering affordable properties for older residents in the site of the former West End Day Centre. Allendale Court is another success story, again in Denton West End, which I've mentioned previously in this chamber, which was opened last year and is a trailblazer for providing support for adults with learning disabilities, helping them to gain skills and live more independently within the community. Outside housing, we've also recently opened the Dementia Advice Centre in partnership with other organisations, and I've recently gone back to visit that centre, and it's going from strength to strength with more residents visiting it every single week. Despite the cuts we've seen, Newcastle continues to attract fantastic events to the city also, including the Great Exhibition of the North and both of the Rugby Union finals later on this year, as well as the transplant games. And of course, I'm personally delighted that the opening ceremony and first game of the Rugby League World Cup will be here in Newcastle. This is about the Labour council stepping forward, bringing investment into our city and putting us on the map as a place to hold these fantastic events, and I'm disappointed with the actions of the opposition who want to cut that sort of investment that we're having in this city. And as much as I want to finish on the positive, Lord Mayor, there's no getting away from the challenges we face in Newcastle. The government has taken the decision to step away from funding local services and instead place a burden on hard-pressed taxpayers. Their assessment of local government funding factors in assumptions on increases in council tax, and on top of that, we have the social care precept and the police precepts. Council tax is a regressive taxation, and this will shift funding from central government to local, hard-pressed taxpayers in an area like Newcastle, which see residents paying more in a city that has an ability to raise less and seen unprecedented pressure on services. The unfairness of the local government funding cannot continue, we are at breaking point, and we must collectively work to press the government on this. And I just wish that Lib Dems had done something about it for the five years they were in government. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Greenough. Councillor Haddad will not be speaking. I call on councillor King, and could I ask councillor Kilgore to be ready to speak after councillor King, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. As a boy, growing up in Newcastle, I used to go down the park and hang out with my mates and kick a ball around. There are other groups in sometimes dilapidated but functional play areas and courts that were doing the same thing. The formation of the Parks Trust concerns me greatly, particularly the implications for access to our public spaces. The commercialisation of our public spaces will likely reduce access if a festival is held and access is by ticket, if stalls are licensed and ball gains are discouraged by I am also concerned with workers' rights. What happens if the Parks Trust fails and is taken over again by the council, the leaseholder? I understand that the current workers will be two feet across. In the event of failure, what will happen to workers' future pension contributions? If monies from commercialisation are then ploughed back into the most commercially viable areas, often surrounded by the wealthiest citizens, what will be the long-term impact on the less profitable areas of the city? The areas where I used to play had old equipment, but the areas themselves were safe. Are we now on in the inevitable journey where richer areas of the city have better public spaces and poorer areas are left with unsafe spaces? In a time of increasing youth violent crime due to a lack of youth schemes and opportunities, will the formation of the Parks Trust aggravate youth antisocial behaviour? Denying them access in richer areas and causing those in poorer areas to go unused due to lack of maintenance? The Parks Trust will exacerbate inequalities in our city and cause it to be less safe with this administration's creeping privatisation of our commons.
Thank you, councillor King. After councillor Kilgore, could I ask for councillor Allen to be ready to speak, please?
Lord Mayor, you'll not be surprised that I want to concentrate on the adult social care element of this budget. As I told councillor last month, due to government cuts and unfunded cost pressures, adult social care has seen a budget reduction of £48 million since 2011/12. We face cost pressures alone of £19.3 million over the next three years. We are increasingly reliant on one-off monies to underpin statutory activity, amounting to approximately £23.6 million this financial year alone. to approximately twenty-three point six million pounds this financial year alone. As others have mentioned, this Tory government is hell-bent on shifting the financial burden of delivering local and often statutory services onto the shoulders of local council taxpayers in the form of assumed council tax increases and through the social care precept. And we know the additional challenge we face in Newcastle because of our lower council tax base. The sheer unfairness and inequity of it is staggering. We're not alone in this. The LGA today estimated that even if all councils increased their council taxes to the maximum allowed, there would still be a funding gap of one billion pounds in the coming financial year just to maintain existing standards of care, rising to three point six billion by 2025. Raising council tax can never be the answer to fixing our chronically underfunded social care system. A three-year budget allows us time to plan budget proposals and to discuss them with service users, using their views and experiences to help shape service provision. The main difference between this budget and previous budgets is that this time, we can't make these savings on this level of savings on our own. We need the city to work together and take a whole-system approach. I'm pleased to say that those discussions are progressing well. Officers have used their creativity and innovation to design and deliver different models of care, but inevitably, we find ourselves in a position of managing demand and being less able to prioritise prevention work, which will clearly have long-term implications. And yet, despite this, we still deliver some amazing services. We're one of a decreasing number of councils to still provide a meals-at-home service. The Welford Centre continues to provide a day service for adults with learning disabilities and additional complex needs. Bike-A-Lodge continues to provide a specialised dementia care service. Over eight and a half million... Sorry, over eight and a half thousand safeguarding alerts were investigated last year, and more than two thousand of our residents received short-term support for our re-ablement service. We provided support for almost five thousand adults last year, and eight hundred and ninety adults were provided with equipment or home adaptation so they can live in their own homes for longer. We've built accommodation such as Allendale Court to support adults with learning disabilities or autism to live independently, and Julie House, our first extra-care housing provision in the city, designed specifically to be dementia-friendly. We continue to commission the Newcastle Carers Centre to deliver support to carers in the city, and the tackling sexual exploitation hub continues to carry out vital work, and we've very recently launched our multi-agency safeguarding hub. So for councillor Ferguson's information, the vision of how adult social care will look in the future is outlined in your report. I've just described some of the things we do and we will continue to do, and to an extent, you can see the plans in this budget, to which I have to say you've put forward no amendments. There's so much good work happening in adult social care, Lord Mayor, and indeed, across the council. Good work that will continue throughout the three years that this budget covers. I would end by asking, if this is what a Labour administration is able to achieve now, just imagine what we could achieve if we were properly funded. Austerity is a political choice, Lord Mayor, a choice embraced by this government and the previous coalition government in full knowledge of the dire consequences. I look forward to a Labour government committed to finding a sustainable and fair funding solution to the crisis in social care. But in the meantime, despite the incredibly difficult choices we're being forced to make, I commend the budget to council. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you councillor Kilgore. After councillor Allen, would councillor Kemp be ready to speak, please? Pardon? Thank you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I wish to address my comments mainly to the section concerning the communities team and ward budgets, which is on page one through four, and where a saving of two hundred and four thousand pounds is proposed in this budget. Residents of Parklands Ward pay large amounts of council tax into the city's coffers, yet they see little in return. We have roads and pavements that are a disgrace, and we have had many litter bins removed. I suppose it could be said that money has been spent on the cycle lanes that have been installed up and down the Great North Road, but quite honestly, that project has been shambolic in its implementation and has led to anger, frustration and in some cases, safety issues for residents. Neither residents nor ward councillors can understand how this project can be so mismanaged by the Labour Party. Although we'd like to receive more money as award grant, we know that our residents are interested in how we spend the meagre amounts we do receive. And by the way, don't be misled by thinking that the figures shown on the council website are a true reflection of the amount we receive this year. We actually receive the lowest amount in the city, but due to the inability of an organisation to undertake work we paid for in 2017/18, which led to a refund, our budget for the past financial year looks reasonably healthy compared to the other Gosforth wards. But because our allocation is so low, we do our best to get good value for the residents of Parklands, as I'm sure other ward councillors do too. For example, we have provided small grants to the award-winning three-mile allotments to help them improve their site, and in return, they plant containers on the Great North Road with bulbs and plants to make the area look more attractive, as we can't afford the floral displays that other wards with larger budgets can. Other environmental projects we have supported are the Gosforth Nature Reserve, which has received small grants over the past few years to enable it to help protect local wildlife and educate youngsters of the importance of the environment. And we have worked with the other Gosforth wards to help support Gosforth Central Park, which is now looked after by a great team of volunteers for the benefit of the whole of Gosforth. We have discussed the lack of facilities for young people many times in this chamber, and that is why we have helped Brunton Park Scouts to improve their building, which has enabled them to increase their membership so that the young people of the area have somewhere they can call their own. Sporting organisations have benefited from our ward grants, enabling them to sign up local girls and boys as well as adults for a variety of sporting activities such as rugby, cricket, tennis and football, and we all need to be doing more to encourage people of all ages to increase their fitness levels. We have funded litter picking equipment for the public-spirited groups who go out clearing up litter at weekends, which unfortunately is needed because of the reduction in litter bins in the area. And in the past, we've given small grants to charities such as Daft as a Brush to help them in their much-needed work with cancer patients, and also to the Gosforth Community Minibus Project. All of this we manage with a small budget and the cooperation of local residents, and we need it to continue, as where else are these groups going to find the funds to continue their sterling work? It may be a small amount of money we give, but the impact can be significant. As regards ward coordination, we have been very grateful for the work that our ward coordinator has done with local groups, helping them to set up residence associations such as the one in Grange, and helping groups to apply for ward funds. Coordinators can provide valuable links between wards and groups, and their knowledge built over time can help in the decision-making process. We all know that these are difficult times, but we also know that sometimes just giving small amounts to local groups can help them to help many of our residents when they hit problems in their lives, and I would have thought that this was something that we wished to encourage. I support the amendments, Lord Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Allen. After councillor Kemp, would councillor Taylor be ready to speak, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. So what we get from the... is what we should expect from the opposition, an abrogation of responsibility, a failure to acknowledge any culpability for the austerity programme we face, and a presentation of something which shows a complete lack of political acumen, and frankly, a journey to Fantasy Island. The proposals in the amendments are short-term, fail to address the challenges, seek refuge in the use of reserves ignoring the clear warnings from other councils who have done this. The use of one-off funds to fund day-to-day services is not prudent, it is a last-of-plast economics. The astonishing fact that the party opposite chooses to cut our planned eight-hundred-thousand pound investment into a city-wide anti-littering campaign, which is about behaviour change, which is intervention, and it's early councillor King, and targeted litter hotspots, tells me that they do not listen to residents. This is possibly the single biggest issue that we hear of, and we as the administration are listening and acting. They suggest cutting this because what we offer is gesture politics. If political gestures are as it seems to be suggested about listening to residents and putting in place manifesto pledges, then I for one am proud to make this gesture. Councillor Ferguson said we need a waste strategy. Well, good grief, we do, don't we? And we have one. And guess what? It's even been to your favourite committee, overview and scrutiny, and was granted, passed through. With regards to Brunswick, the proposed closure was in an earlier budget proposal. We have not yet made a decision because there is an ongoing service review, but it is identified because that is called prudent budgeting. The opposition fail or choose not to recognise the significant efforts made to preserve this service. Works such as the diversion of rubble, the use of garden waste charges and many other changes to the operations, through this activity, we have maintained the service. The Lib Dems have come forward with a proposal of open consultation. You've had two years to develop a proposal, but of course, you offer nothing. That is of course, aside from the increased demand on resource through the numerous focus leaflets that are being produced tonight. The opposition don't believe sufficient effort has been made to explore ways of managing demand generated by out-of-area users, and this proposal risks unfairly penalising those who legitimately pay for the service. Agreed. What the opposition don't do is read council papers or listen in meetings. We have, as the leader of the opposition knows, as she was present at cabinet, but clearly chooses to ignore, announced resident permits for the household waste recycling centres to be introduced at the start of this financial year to ensure that our council taxpayers can access facilities and we are not funding services for out-of-town residents. I suggest what the opposition offers here is simply rubbish. With regards to the blue badge and shop mobility proposals, well, what a surprise. Councillor Stone in the opposition press release stoops to the very lowest of the low in his comments. We are not attacking the disabled, that is a disgusting statement to make and frankly, very insulting to the administration and officers. Our proposals for the blue badge scheme follows engagement and consultation with disability groups. Obviously, this is a very difficult and emotive subject, but we have gone through a rigorous process. The blue badge scheme was introduced and is based primarily upon access rather than ability to pay, and that has been factored into what our proposal is. We are currently working with groups to review the current Blue Bay estate to ensure that they are in the right location and the machines etc. are all accessible. The proposal incorporates additional free time to allow for mobility issues for the blue badge users to make use of the bays. The shop mobility scheme has been reviewed as to the numbers in the scheme and the usage and what is proposed, taken into account the amendment, taken note of the consultation process, is a scheme that gives current members plenty of use time and allows the scheme to grow. The Lib Dems, through their amendments, suggest that a one-year retention of the current blue badge and shop mobility at the cost of a city-wide anti-litter campaign and additional hotspot clearing is what the city wants. So what does that actually do, your amendments? Well, next year, we would have no campaign to address the issues of litter and fly tipping, not had the litter hit squads, and still we face exactly the same issues of the blue badges, shop mobility and increased littering. What a great, well-thought-through, sustainable, prudent proposal. Lord Mayor, there is no doubt that any budget that involves an administration being forced by central government to make continued cuts is never easy, but I urge council to support the budget and reject the short-term, flawed and gesture-based amendments.
Thank you councillor Kemp. After councillor Taylor, could councillor Young please be ready to speak? Thank you.
Lord Mayor, each year, we are told by Labour councillors that we can only stop unpopular cuts in services by suggesting cuts elsewhere. Yet each year, we make suggestions for where savings could be made, and each year, these are ignored by the ruling group. To give an example, in 2013, I suggested pulling together the work of the council, the CCG and Newcastle hospitals to provide an integrated approach to commissioning and provision of services. I pointed out that this could lead to less duplication and fragmentation of service, shared information and joined-up teams, co-location of some services and better value for money. And to give an example, in 2013, West Cheshire's altogether better plans for community budgets across a number of areas aimed to deliver a hundred and seven million in cuts and cost reductions and savings over five years, a significant amount of money. In 2013, I also called for the integration of health and social care. Six years later, the council is still only beginning to make these changes. In 2016, I again called for a lot more discussion with partners about other ways of co-funding health and soc-
Just a moment councillor Taylor. Councillor Taylor is misleading counsel. I have in front of me the amendments from 2013, and the things that she's talking on are not part of it.
Sorry, it was in my speech councillor Forbes, and I don't see that that has to have been part of an amendment. That is what I said in my speech, I have a copy if you would like it.
Okay, thank you.
In 2016, I again called for a lot more discussion with partners about other ways of co-funding health and social services to try and ensure we are not faced with further distressing cuts to frontline services. And I also pointed out to councils, to council, the millions of pounds being saved by other councils by sharing services with their neighbours. Services such as community safety, payroll and employee database, IT and HR services, and joint waste partnerships. Now, wouldn't that be a good idea, to have a joint waste partnership with our local colleagues on other councils? And such partnerships could also be with other public bodies such as the hospitals and universities. Over the last six years, the steps this council has taken towards shared services have been hesitant and painfully slow. Yet such savings could easily pay for the amendments we have suggested to the budget both this year and in the future. The health pound concept is at last a step in this direction, and the combined authority may help to make some progress on shared services, but time and money have been wasted over the last six years by Labour councillors failing to push forward with these measures. Each year, we are also told that somehow the cuts are all the fault of the coalition government, that somehow we are responsible for every decision made by MPs during the coalition years. Well, if that's the case, then I hold all Labour councillors responsible for the decisions made by Labour MPs in recent years. And as far as I'm concerned, Labour lost all moral authority to complain about austerity when the vast majority of Labour MPs voted to support the cuts for... sorry, the tax cuts for the rich in last year's Tory budget. At that time, analysis by the Resolution Foundation found that these tax cuts, which are costing the Treasury almost two point eight billion, are overwhelmingly benefiting wealthier households, with almost half the giveaway going to the top ten percent of earners. How on earth do Labour justify supporting tax cuts for the rich when, for example, they could have suggested using this money to sort out the dire state of universal credit? Labour councillors are in no position to lecture us. As regards the specific proposals on health and social care in this budget, we are pleased that new ways of working over the last few years have led to savings without serious damage to services. In particular, the moves towards intermediate care and more extra-care housing are very much to be welcomed. I am however concerned by the two-year... the year-two proposal to remove the automatic five pound per week income disregard for disability-related expenditure when calculating a service user's contributions towards the cost of community-based services. When taken together with proposals on shop mobility and charges for blue badge holders, I'm afraid this does seem to be an unfair attack on disabled residents. And these proposals, taken with the cuts to the Newcastle Fund, certainly make a mockery of Labour's inaccurate and highly offensive claim that only Labour cares. I'm also concerned about the value of using some of the additional one point six extra money, one point six million extra money for community health and wellbeing projects. I'd like to know what assessment was made of the value for money of the 2014 wellbeing fund. As many of the schemes started with that money were abandoned when the money ran out, how do we know that won't happen again? Spreading this money across the city in small amounts for unproven, small-scale interventions does not seem a good use of money, especially when a considerable percentage could be lost in administration costs. Similarly, using one-off money for a pre-election spring clean will do nothing towards dealing with the appalling neglect of local neighbourhoods over recent years due to the cut in local services, and will do nothing to deal with the dire state of our roads and pavements, which other colleagues will discuss in more detail. These issues need a long-term, sustainable approach, not a temporary, one-off fix. Lord Mayor, we have put forward sensible, financially responsible, costed alternatives to this budget, and have explained how the Liberal Democrats would have a different approach to Labour. I'm proud to support our amendments.
Thank you councillor Taylor. After councillor Young, would councillor Donnelly be prepared to speak, please?
I'm a councillor in North Jesmond, which is a fairly prosperous part of Newcastle, but there are sections of our local population which have been hit by austerity. For example, some residents in sheltered accommodation for the elderly are dependent on universal credit and have seen their incomes affected. Budget cuts have forced YHN to review the hours offered by their concierge service, sometimes leaving residents feeling less secure in their own homes. Our local primary school has also felt the impact of budget cuts. After years without proper pay rises, teachers are struggling with low morale, and teachers who feel undervalued and overworked are less able to recognise and support vulnerable children in their classrooms. And it's these children who are likely to need the support of our care system, which is already hampered by cuts and cost pressures. We have a large student population in Jesmond- We have a large student population in Jesmond, and they are valued for the positive contributions they make to our community, not least of which is the voluntary work they do, such as giving English lessons to asylum seekers, IT support for the elderly and litter picking, filling the gaps in the services which our cash-strapped council struggles to deliver. Jesmond Library is one of the city's success stories. Run by the community with city council support, the library demonstrates how this Labour council has found innovative ways of protecting services by working with local communities in the context of deep budget cuts. The government says that austerity is over, but clearly it's not. This Labour council will continue to protect the most vulnerable in all our communities and find innovative ways to move forward in spite of austerity. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Young. Now, I understand that was your maiden speech, is that correct? After councillor Donnelly, could I ask councillor Lovett to be ready to speak please?
Lord Mayor, before I speak on behalf of residents, I would like to thank all the officers involved for their difficult work in arriving at a balanced budget to enable the policies brought in by the administration. As the leader of council states, the burden of increased council costs is now passed directly to households and businesses. For a number of years, people of Newcastle have had to pay more local taxes for less services. The council is well aware of the difficulties that residents are faced, from slow economic growth, low or no pay rises, inflation and the rising of household bills. Yet the council persists in borrowing, ignoring the fact that what is borrowed at interest must be repaid at interest from income, so reducing every year the money available to pay for vital services. My residents, who mostly pay their council charges personally, feel that they have reached the limit of what is acceptable to them. They have told me in particular that they find hits on the most vulnerable with charges for Blue Badge holders and the retreat in adult social care especially difficult. On the environment side, they feel the move towards closing Brunswick Recycling Centre makes no sense. They are aware of and have issues with fly tipping across the city. To limit the recycling facilities available to the public will only worsen this. The issue of air quality is also of concern, and especially the easy let-the-mortar-us-pay solutions that will lead disproportionately into the pockets of the lower-paid, who need to travel across and into the city to get to work. What fairness is there in this policy? Lord Mayor, I believe every one of us understands the impact of having to do more every year with less. Whilst I acknowledge it is not a long-term solution, I feel that the use of council reserves should be investigated to help boost services for the most needy residents with the biggest difficulty with their own budgets. Also, I feel the council should publish clearly the amount of interest in capital repayments that comes out of every pound of council tax levied, so that the residents can judge for themselves the value of what is known as potential borrowing. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you councillor Donnelly. After councillor Lovett, could councillor Bell be ready to speak please?
Lord Mayor, what a great idea, a spring clean. But how's the city gotten into this mess in the first place? You want to plough money into a spring clean because you haven't kept on top of your housekeeping. You can't continue to do nothing and then react. The council leader said we have made efficiencies, but it's a well-known fact in the industry that I come from that it costs three to seven times more to react to a situation than it does to be proactive. I remember complaining last year about the length of the grass for weeks and weeks on Kingston Park Road prior to the election in 2018. Nothing was done until election day when eight tractors turned up and mowed the grass, eight tractors instead of the usual two. That's around four times the cost of a normal cut. Add to that the additional damage that the longer grass will be doing to the grasscutters, it's total waste of money, and I can give you lots of other examples like that. I'd like to turn to litter. Every month residents in Fawdon and West Gosforth and across the city and groups like Friends of Fawdon Park are picking up litter, bottles, cans and dog poo. I've personally collected around 40-plus black bin bags of rubbish in the last 12 months. Across the city, thousands of tonnes of waste are collected by residents and they're unaccounted for. Residents have spoke to me saying, is this what it's come to, councillors and residents' litter picking? One resident in Fawdon and West Gosforth is even providing a litter bin at Kingsmere Bus Shelter on Salters Road. I've requested new litter bins and been told no more allocated this financial year because they're not required. But this is because some residents are picking up their own litter and putting it in their own bins, but they're also picking things up like dog poo. One lady in my ward is continually having to pick dog poo up, and it's one of my bookbears. And we need litter bins for dog poo, I know some people are laughing about it, but it's How do you know if there isn't a need when you don't count that rubbish? You're now looking at putting smart meters on litter bins, but this isn't going to tell you the real situation, and that's because thousands of tonnes of litter are collected by people and not the council. If you want to know how bad the litter problem has become, just look at the A1 between the River Tyne and our boundary with Northumberland. For example, between Kingston Park, the A696 and the Fawdon roundabout, Kingston Park Road, there are hundreds and hundreds of beer cans and bottles and lots of rubbish, but no litter bin to be seen on the public footpath on the east side of the A1. Former Fawdon councillors asked for a litter bin at the Hillsview Bridge, but there's still none there. I've also looked at the road and pavement condition plans for each ward, which were conducted by Yotta published in March 2018. This report highlighted possible road and pavement schemes and their conditions across the whole of the city. It's now a year later and these roads and pavements will have deteriorated even further. In Redhouse Farm, we've managed to reallocate historical funding for repairs around Hayden Close, where a pothole around three foot by two foot was filled about 10 months ago. The junction at Caldwell Road and Acre Crescent, which is on a main bus route, is broken up so badly it looks like a dirt track. I've been informed there's no money for patching and the potholes will be filled. If you don't know, potholes require rework, you have to go back over and over again to refill, so that comes back to my point about costing more money than it's waste. In parts of Regent Farm, where the road surface is concrete, all roads are deemed to be in poor condition. And at the entrance to Rothbury Avenue from Wansbeck Road South, I've reported action required following a near miss to one of our senior residents who almost fell when they crossed the road with their walker. This section of the road is also highlighted in the report by Yotta. On the bright side, we've been informed that Edgefield Avenue will have some work done in the next financial year. I hope it happens, considering the length of time it took to get Gosforth High Street resurfaced. I was told last year in February 2018 that it was imminent, but it wasn't resurfaced until February 2019. And by the way, passengers are still waiting for the bus shelter situation outside the gym on Gosforth High Street to be resolved after three winters of discontent for literally tens of thousands of passengers. In West Gosforth, part of our ward, around 50% of our pavements are rated as deteriorating or poor condition. In Fawdon, the main pavement area is concerned are Fawdon Park Road and 75% of pavements in Cox Lodge are rated as deteriorating or poor. I would advise councillors to look at their own reports and see how bad their pavements and roads are. It's an embarrassment to know that when you reach the boundary of the city, a black cloud hangs over us, and that's because you spent so much money on reacting to situations instead of fixing the problem. You just blame the government cuts and the coalition, it's someone else's fault, not yours. I support the amendment, Lord Mayor.
Thank you councillor Lovett. Could councillor Woodock be ready to speak after councillor Bell? Thank you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I didn't want to be so rude as to interrupt a fellow colleague, but it's a while since we've heard from councillor Donnelly in this chamber, and I believe that he still owes an apology to my great friend and colleague, and also to the Lord Mayor's position within the city council. And I'm just wondering if that may be forthcoming at some point. Lord Mayor, there's something else that quite surprised me tonight, which is the fact that, not for the first time, it'll be the second time tonight, that we're going to quote a Conservative Prime Minister. But I think it's three very, very important words, short statement that you made, but a huge impact, and the three words were austerity is over. And when I heard that, I couldn't believe it. And I thought, what I'll do is I'll actually go into my ward, which is in Kenton, and start asking some of our local residents within the Kenton ward whether or not they felt that austerity was over. It was no surprise, Lord Mayor, I didn't find anybody that turned around and said, yes, things have got better. No, people turned around and said, things have got worse. What did come to me, which was evident, was the fact that when we talk in this chamber about the macroeconomics of the city or the country, it can actually just get lost and it just becomes white noise with people. So when we talk about £327 million, that didn't really register with some people that I was talking to, or even the £60 million still didn't register. But what did was when I got it down to the nitty-gritty about how it actually impacts on individuals, and that's what we're about, ward councillors, protecting and inspiring individuals within our ward, residents within our ward. So when we talk about each household £2,481, that started to literally hit home. And then when we broke it down to residents, an £1,100, that certainly hit home. Because that's £1,100 each individual, either needs the funding or, in this case, services, which some of our residents desperately need. So, I hope that Mrs Mayor is watching us tonight, I'm sure that she's not busy at all, and I'll give her an offer, an invitation, to come to Kenton Ward and walk around the street with the three local councillors, the three Labour councillors, and talk to some of our residents, and let her explain to them how austerity is over. I think it's only right that we should point out, especially within our own portfolio areas for Cabinet members, is what we've managed to do through these austere years and what we'll continue to do for the good of the people of Newcastle. So within employment, I've continued to drive forward our work in delivering the economic growth plans. We've managed stimulating employment and growing skills, securing new jobs through inward investment and business growth. Because of this, unemployment is at its lowest since 2005. That's a 5.6% per cent between April 17 and March 18. Around 4,000 fewer of the city's residents are unemployed than a year ago, and the level is 10,000 below its peak in 2009. More and more Newcastle residents are working, at almost 140,000 people, as our city's growing economy provides opportunity. And Lord Mayor, that's a key word for people, especially in the type of ward that I represent, opportunity and inspiration. Without that, what hope would there be? So I am proud of the fact that even through these austere times, that this Labour administration has year-on-year brought a budget, a difficult budget, that none of us came into local politics to have to do, to make cuts, stringent cuts like we've had to do in past years, and continuing to do this through the austerity measures that this government has put in place, and I will say it, supported by the coalition government in early years. So, Lord Mayor, my colleague councillor Gilgore has actually used my last line within my prepared notes, which was, if we've managed to do this so far, imagine what we could do with fair funding for Newcastle in the north-east of England. Lord Mayor, I urge colleagues on both sides of this chamber, support the one prudent plan that is being brought forward and the one budget, that is our budget. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you councillor Bell. After councillor Woodock, would councillor Higgins be ready to speak please?
Lord Mayor, I'll start my remarks by being put out slightly with councillor Ferguson's opening remarks tonight, when he talked about a fresh-faced politician coming on to the political stage in 1997. He then said Tony Blair, he wasn't talking about me. Lord Mayor, this is not my first budget debate, and I hope it isn't my last. Over the years, there's been a growing trend towards fairly base, to-ing and fro-ing, words in the budget book, praising how fantastic, innovative, wonderful the council is, then in the debate it's about blame, there is no money, and that it is all our fault. This is of course based on history, that there was no money locally because there had been no money nationally. And of course, as councillor Bell has just pointed out, according to the government, that is all, all history. As we all know, it is not. We could, as I'm sure after our recent press spat, go on with this to-ing and fro-ing all night, I'm sure councillor Higgins, if he was given the chance, would do so. But I'm not going to concentrate on that, I am going to concentrate on just two aspects of the budget which are important for my residents. In the budget, there's a paragraph about investing in transport. It talks about an air quality feasibility study, something which is a complete Vol Vas from its position in Gosforth at least, from its position only a few months ago. Of course, it does rather stick in the craw that air pollution in Gosforth has been the worst in the city, only when forced by the government, has a major proposal, however belated, however flawed it may be, come forward. It also talks of improving major highways and improvements more generally. The track record of project management in this city hasn't been the best. Kellamworth Road, Blue House Roundabout, Cow Gate, the High Street, the bus shelters that councillor Lovett was saying in my ward. They have not been, Lord Mayor, the best exemplar of good practice. Labour crow on about a fit-for-purpose council, by any stretch, this council does not reach that mark. The basis we set out on the budget is also fundamentally flawed, as councillor Greenhoff pointed out earlier. Council tax is broken, and it's hitting this council hard due to its comparatively poor band-A housing stock. We are where we are. Our resources are slimmer, but Lord Mayor, this council is failing in some key areas. Our residents pay high levels of council tax proportionally, in no short part, due to the reasons I've just set out. Newcastle deserves better than that, and Newcastle will demand better.
Thank you councillor Woodock. After councillor Higgins, would councillor Ash be ready to speak please?
Yes, thank you, Lord Mayor. I would like to speak in support of the budget proposals as submitted to council this evening, and can I also thank all of those who contributed towards reaching so challenging and difficult decisions in the most trying of circumstances, which is never an easy task in the current climate. Several of the points that I'm going to make have been covered previously, but before I mention those points, can I just say that I'm actually quite disappointed at the manner in which so many members of the opposition party seem to be prepared to talk down our wonderful city, because I'm actually very proud of Newcastle. But mentions being made about the fact that, I think the leader of the council first mentioned the fact that the Chancellor Philip Hammond and also the Prime Minister, as recently as at Prime Minister's Questions today, trumpeted the fact that austerity is over. I actually find those comments personally very insulting, and if you go round and I actually find those comments personally very insulting, and if you go round and talk to people in my ward and in the city who are suffering the consequences of government cuts, then I'm sure that they will find that there is a very hollow ring to those words from the government front bench. And I'm sure that the millionaires in the cabinet can still enjoy their bottles of claret, but in fact, so many other people are suffering the damaging consequences. I'm also pleased that the leader acknowledged that in making the difficult decisions about where savings can be made, it's imperative that we continue to recognise the significant economic and social divisions that exist in our city. Figures contained in the medium-term plan available to council this evening indicate sadly that over one-fifth of Newcastle's population live in areas that are amongst the 10% most deprived in the country, and sadly, I'm accompanied by music at the moment, Lord Mayor, but sadly, a thriving West End food bank in the west end of the city is graphic evidence of this deprivation. This is of particular relevance in my own ward of Bemford and Scottswood, where so many residents are dependent on the services that we provide, and hence are particularly vulnerable in suffering the disproportionate impact of cuts to many of our vital social services. Councillor Kilgawa has already stolen some of my thunder about mentioning the cuts to adult social care, and we know that the introduction of the Osborne Tax, as I call it, did nothing to plug the funding gap, which has been kicked down the road by government in recent months, and which needs to be addressed urgently. It's therefore, I think, a testament to the social workers working within our local authority, that despite the cost pressures, despite the cuts of £48 million that councillor Kilgawa mentioned, they are still delivering such an excellent service, and in fact, feedback from our service users is always very, very positive. We continue to be very innovative, and the multi-agency safeguarding hub, which has recently been set up, is an excellent example of how we are seeking to protect those at most danger of exploitation. It would also be remiss of me not to make mention of our libraries, which have always been so dear to my heart, and in so many ways, these are symbolic of our desire to safeguard the resources so important to some of our most disadvantaged residents. In the past year alone, well over 100 libraries have been closed nationwide, and this has been the picture every year since 2010 and the onset of austerity politics, with some local authorities in danger of losing their library stock in its entirety. It is therefore to our immense credit that through innovative partnerships, such as the recent health provision at Fenham Library, so shamefully criticised by the party opposite, and the similar partnership with Newcastle College, so successful at our own remaining library in Dentonburn, we have retained our libraries, albeit with reduced hours, which stand in marked contrast to many other local authorities, including those of our neighbours in the North East, and it is to be commended. It's inevitable that faced with these acute financial challenges, then it has been necessary to make difficult decisions in relation to a number of sensitive matters, including shop mobility, disabled parking provision, and other areas. And I've got no doubt, as we've seen, that the party opposite will predictably seek to exploit these in the hope of easy headlines in the local media. However, these decisions are not taken lightly, and have only been taken after the fullest consultation with the relevant bodies, such as Disability North, and those most directly affected, and any changes will be closely monitored in the future. Lord Mayor, in making my closing remarks and supporting these prudent budget proposals, which seek to protect the interests of the most vulnerable, I would also like to commend the leader of the council for the determined manner in which he has constantly lobbied on behalf of our city in the face of such unjust funding by the Tory government. His efforts are greatly appreciated by so many, and on a personal level, I would urge him to continue this work in the years ahead. Thank you very much, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Higgins. After councillor Ashby, would councillor Dunn be ready to speak, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. As councillor Ferguson said earlier, we're fond of looking back here. The other side of the chamber wants us to acknowledge mistakes, we do. Your last Prime Minister ran the economy into the ground, nationalised Northern Rock without compensation, and then wanted us to prop him up as a discredited minority. Your preferred future one would also run us into the ground, and certainly won't bail out Newcastle, however much wishful thinking there is. Thirty-five years ago, I stood up at rate-making on Middlesbrough Borough Council and advocated a systematic review of the council's budget, line by line, taking nothing for granted, just as we are proposing tonight. The dinosaurs of old Labour, this was before new Labour had been invented, poo-pooed the idea as rubbish, impractical, unnecessary. A couple of years later, after their momentum revolution of those days, they introduced the idea as their own. So if we don't turf you out, I expect our ideas tonight to come back in the future, rebashed as socialist Leninist Labour, or whatever they'll be calling themselves then. But, Lord Mayor, I'd also like to talk about reserves and project control. This is always the most boring, but also vital topic, because it's where some of our wriggle room comes from. Its figuring is opaque, so why does it go up and down with no rhyme or reason? It is, in my view, from years of observing spending in government departments, that often it's the result of less than optimum project control. In them, their olden days, there would often be a last-minute panic to spend money, use it or lose it was the mantra. Now, there's less such imperative, as money is put to reserves without much notice being taken. When you look around the city, you see projects running late. I call in evidence the Killingworth Road and Great North Road cycleway, both of which affect my ward, both are well behind schedule, but there seems to be no increased momentum to catch up. The Hadrix Mill follow-on project has changed, as has Blue House Roundabout. The consequence is that funds available aren't being spent. My colleague councillor Stone may refer to the Cycle City Ambition Fund money the council received from government and is still unspent. Among the consequences of these and other underspends is the short-term increase in reserves, around a surprising £20 million in the last quarter, I believe, hardly a sign of a council at risk of bankruptcy, as councillor Fools would imply. The first response to this must be public scrutiny of projects in detail upon completion, and then identification of lessons learned and report back. Residents are not fools, many of them are professionals, they see things going wrong or not happening, and want to know why, and how much extra it's costing, and they have a right to know how things are managed in their name. Secondly, as councillor Ferguson proposes, reserves squirreled away must be time-linked. And thirdly, we need to be a little less conservative in our use of reserves. Very small amounts of money, as described by councillor Allen, can go a long way in motivating community volunteers. It wouldn't take tens of millions to have a big effect on the places in which we live. We need leadership, creativity, localism, and determination, things that Liberal Democrats are prepared to supply.
Thank you, Lord, thank you councillor Ashby. After councillor Dunn, could councillor Keating be ready to be speaking, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, council. Tonight is a really important night for the city when we set the budget, and I think that's demonstrated enormously by the huge amount of information and work that has gone in to preparing this budget. And I would like to thank all of my Labour colleagues, all of the officers who've been involved in that. As well as being an important night for the city, Lord Mayor, this is Ash Wednesday. I don't know whether that's filtered through to most people. And I was really interested, when councillor Ferguson spoke, he tried to give us a history lesson. Well, my history's a bit longer than his, and my history says it's a day of sackcloth and ashes, and frankly, I don't see any opposite, and I should. It's also the first day of Lent today. I thought about giving cynicism up, but decided not to, at least not today. I do disagree with councillor Ferguson about our approach to the budget in this city. It would be easy and totally wrong to portray councils as simply managing decline of public services over the last decade. In Newcastle, under Labour, the council has achieved extraordinary things for our residents. I do agree with councillor Ferguson that the Lib Dems have vision, or maybes, I should say hallucinations. Let's just look at some truths. The Living Wage Foundation has just published a report describing how austerity cuts to public services have kept wages below what is needed for a decent life. Carers, cleaners, and other public sector workers cannot make ends meet. Workers are angry and want change. This Labour group wants it too. Another report concluded that public-private partnerships, including outsourcing, cannot be regarded as a viable option for delivering public services or infrastructure, and thank God we've not done it. That's why this Labour group is supporting the breaking point campaign. Public services are at breaking point, Lord Mayor. We need proper investment now and in the future. Another few truths. Borrowing under the Tories by 2020 will be more than all Labour governments in history. Companies like Google, Amazon, and others have avoided paying £5.8 billion in UK corporation tax, money that could have been spent on public services. People in this city are getting poorer, the working poor, children living in poverty, in difficulty, hard lives as described by the leader, reduced pay for younger workers, longer waiting lists in the NHS. And do you know what we hear? And austerity's over. Well, they're fine words, but state expenditure will still decrease every year until 2023. As for the amendments, Lord Mayor, what can I say? Should I say anything? I've listened to the speeches that have come from the opposite side of the chamber, and do you know what? I think I'd be wasting my breath. And honestly, I think that, and I urge my colleagues and council, to deal with those amendments accordingly, and support the budget recommendations. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Dunn. After councillor Keating, would councillor Powers be ready to speak, please?
A renewed congratulations to Wendy Young on her maiden speech. It was so good that I promised not to tell anybody about her incredible adventure in Lavender Gardens last week. Lord Mayor, this afternoon I was doing various multitasking, I was watching the Catline Dragons trouts at Huddersfield for the 45th time, I was writing seven different copies of Pocus, and also contemplating the fact that this is the 33rd council budget in which I've participated, it includes five years on time, and we're, by the way. So I thought I'd become an elder statesman, and that I should rise above the vitriol, present the facts, and deliver a Cassandraan warning to local government. Lord Mayor, between 2011 and 2019, annual public expenditure has risen by 17.5%, from £695 billion to £817 billion forecast for the end of this financial year. Inflation was 14%. As a share of GDP, public expenditure has returned to the level of 2005 to 2009, that is 39%, after the sharp but temporary rise caused by the recession. Well, this overall stasis, sorry, within this overall stasis, there have always been winners and losers. The most obvious winners have been those in receipt of state and/or public sector pensions, someone like me actually, which now account for a fifth of public spending. The NHS has held its own, and a deluge of new funding is imminent. On the other hand, the budgets of DEFRA and the Ministry of Justice have been reduced by 40%. Local government has been another big loser, with revenue spending falling from just over £100 billion in 2011 and 12 to £89.8 billion last year. I don't have the forecast for the outturn this year, for which I apologise. Inflation must also be taken into account there. We must clearly distinguish between the shrinkage of responsibilities, either due, for example, to the spread of academies, or to the reduction or removal of discretionary functions, and on the other hand, cuts to statutory services. Lord Mayor, I first became a councillor a few years after the relevant local government minister told local government that the party's over. At that time, local government, while ultimately subject to the overall jurisdiction of the centre, nonetheless possessed a wide range of functions and a great deal of autonomy. Since then, the overweening ambition of successive central governments have virtually destroyed autonomy, removed many functions, and greatly undermined those that remained. What is to be done, as Lenin might have said, Nigel? Lord Mayor, one has to be deeply pessimistic about the ambitions of Westminster and Whitehall. Unless local government regains more autonomy and functions, and gets them constitutionally entrenched, there is a very great danger that it will simply wither away, and become the administration of nothing.
Thank you, councillor Keating. After councillor Powers, would councillor Gallagher be ready to speak, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. The annual budget has to be the meeting I least enjoy coming to in this chamber. It's one that makes me incredibly angry and disappointed every year that I have to sit here and look at the decisions that we are having to take. And despite the fact that I can take some pride in the innovation that we put forward as a group, and changing some of the services and transforming them and being able to maintain them, and examples like the domestic violence support services that provide reliable services, and other many, many good examples of where we have managed to transform, where we have managed to maintain services, and where we have managed to continue to deliver for our residents, we also often have to make difficult decisions, that see services cut, or in some cases, altogether end. That's the reality of having 50% less money given to this city to provide services than we did in 2010. That's the reality of having over 3,500 less staff members than we did in 2010. And I have to go out of here and explain that to residents after we've made these decisions. And that's harder and harder every year, being able to explain to residents the difficult decisions that we have to take. And then I sit here, and I get more angry, because then I have to listen to the contributions from the members from across the chamber. Budget amendments that have clearly been made by people with their head buried in the sand of the difficult decisions that we have to make. And I'm used to them deliberately trying to cause confusion, and I don't think it's because they're completely economically illiterate, I just think they deliberately choose to put out misinformation to residents so that they can try and secure a vote. A particularly good example of that is when they constantly, and we've heard again tonight, confuse capital over revenue, infrastructure development over service provision. And I think that's absolutely shameful. And while we on this side are talking about the big issues that we face as our city, how we deal with strategy on a city, how we deal with waste on a citywide basis, how we provide social care services for the city most in need, the tunes of millions of pounds, of which we heard from the leader today, we get contributions that tell us about a problem with a pothole on a street, or a litter bin at the corner of their ward. Macro doesn't even come to justify that. I think it's a great disservice to the opposition group that that's the issue that they choose to talk about on such an individual cases basis, rather than offering solutions to the big challenges that we face as a city. And Lord Mayor, I can't believe that we're receiving a history lesson from councillor Ferguson. I know this is before his time, but perhaps I'll give him my own history lesson for the time when the Liberal Democrats ran this city, when they used to spend £1,800 per day on consultants. Or when they spent £27 million reorganising the council to save just £20 million. Or the £45,000 they spent on renaming the name of a park. Or the fact that they turned off the speed cameras in the city, endangering residents' lives and the safety of motorists. Or the £5 million they spent in my wards on the Ewsburn Barrage Bridge, which even today still doesn't work properly. I think it's quite clear that residents wouldn't have confidence in the Liberal Democrats managing our city's finances. And then they tell us about vision. I'll tell you about vision, Lord Mayor. I went and had a look on the Newcastle Liberal Democrats' website because I was curious to what has been their manifestos they've put forward to residents in recent years. And after a lot of searching, and once I'd finished laughing when I came across councillor Stone's news article in 2009 accusing Labour of colluding with the Lib Dems in a plot to raise tuition fees for students. I noticed I haven't seen a Liberal Democrat manifesto put to residents of this city since 2012, for as long as I've been a councillor. And they have the nerve to stand here to say they've got a vision when they can't even go to the electorate with the plans that they want to put forward if they won control of this council. And every meeting I've sat here and we present our council plan, I've time and time again failed to see any amendments to the council plan being put forward, the plan that sets out our work for the coming year. So it's clear to me that the Liberal Democrats have no vision for our city. They have no plans of what they do if they're in control of our city. They certainly don't have a track record of being able to deliver responsible finances for our city. So, Lord Mayor, I will be backing our budget that we're putting forward because it's credible, because it's commitment to our vision and because we had the decency to go out to residents and ask our residents to vote for us on the support of the vision that we put forth through our manifesto. And if the Liberal Democrats want to maybe have that debate next year, then I'd hope they have the decency to go out to residents this year and have that conversation as well. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Powers. After councillor Gallagher, would councillor Talbot be ready to speak, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Can I say, this is the one meeting with council that I hate the most, you know? And I echo your comments earlier, Lord Mayor, about we're all trying to be civil with each other and what have you. I think my comments are probably going to be fairly positive, to be honest. I'd like to start off by talking about the Killinworth Road scheme. It is behind schedule, but I recognise it's not your fault over there. You know, there've been great problems with the gas works and things in the area. In fact, when I was kind of seeing a lady a few months ago, I told her why the roadworks have been delayed. And she actually told me that next time I stand, she'll vote for me. Because she normally votes Labour, but because I was honest with her and didn't blame the Labour council for the roadworks, she said she'd vote for me because I was honest with her. But what concerns me is I'm really not sure what's happening to all the money with Killinworth Road and all of the other schemes that we've had in the area, had planned in the area. And I'm not sure the budget paper has quite given us that level of detail so we can track what's happening with it. I mean, we've had the Redruth proposed in Gosforth, which obviously I campaigned against, but so far no proposals have come forward yet. You know, where is that money now? Has it been protected? Is it sitting somewhere to be used? Is it part of some of the pots of money we've been talking about today in reserves? Things like Blue House, a quarter of the Blue House is in my ward. There was a huge outcry, of course, against the original proposals. And again, I'll give you credit, you know, you'd set up a group to look at the situation and lots of residents were involved and other groups, and they came up with proposals. But again, nothing has yet come back. So again, I'm concerned, you know, what is happening is that money still there? We're talking about large sums of money. I mean, £20 million was mentioned for Hadrick's Mill, but I notice they've now got a bit of momentum building up on that and they've started doing some of the roadworks there. So I suppose I'm saying, show me the money, really. I mean, just prove to me that, you know, this money is still there and it can still be used for these projects. And also, if we do fall off the EU cliff edge at the end of the month, will any of that money be lost because we haven't yet spent it? So, and I can't really tell from the budget documents if that money is still available. And that's all I want to say, Lord Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Gallagher. After councillor Talbot, would councillor Stone be ready to speak, please?
Okay. Thank you, Lord Mayor. The budget debate tonight highlights the key importance of local government as a focal point for local democracy, for local place making and as the provider or commissioner of key services valued by local residents, particularly the more vulnerable among us who rely on local government for their care and wellbeing. Although these services are vital to our residents, as is the economic growth and sustainability of our city, they are not valued nor even really understood by central government. Central government doesn't understand or value the work we do and therefore, by implication, central government doesn't value our residents, doesn't care about the needs of our older population, doesn't care about the needs of our looked after children, basically just doesn't care. Why are Newcastle children and older people valued less by our government than older people and children who live in leafier, more prosperous areas? Surely it can't be just because we vote Labour? It's appalling that our own government's austerity programme, which is supposed to be over, which has been alluded to this evening, continues to attack the very heart of local democracy and support for vulnerable people by again slashing our budget so that by the end of this budget cycle, the government will have cut £327 million from us since 2010, nearly £2,500 per household. Frankly, I'm surprised that we don't see government members going about Newcastle in a Dick Turpin mask. No wonder we're at breaking point. The government's latest idea of a so-called northern windfall to boost the economy of deprived areas post Brexit, or as we prefer to call it, a Brexit bribe, suggests that the whole of the North East would receive a bung of £105 million. Given the population estimate of 2.6 million, this equates to £39.84 per person. The anticipation of what could be bought with this immense amount of money caused me such excitement that I had to sit down to recover. The northern windfall is an absolute insult, trying to bribe us with money which they've already taken from us, pretending that they care. Please, never forget that we would not face these budget cuts had not the Lib Dems joined the Tories in government in 2010 to unleash an unprecedented attack on local government, on our council and on our residents. Despite the immense difficulties we have endured, despite the budget cuts, this administration has done the best it can to support and deliver economic growth, to build new homes, particularly for residents with additional needs, to attract amazing sporting events and to seek to protect our most vulnerable residents. Never forget why we are having to make these cuts and never forget where true responsibilities for these cuts lies. And it's not with us and it's not with our party. I support this budget, Lord Mayor, and oppose the amendments.
Thank you, councillor Talbot. After councillor Stone, would councillor Frue be ready to speak, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Always a pleasure to follow councillor Talbot. I think it was a marked improvement on last year when she said she'd rather stick pins in her eyes than vote for Liberal Democrat budget amendments and I hope she hasn't come with her own supply this year. Lord Mayor, this is my 20th budget debate. In recent years, I've become convinced that the process of setting the council's budget by the administration has far less to do with the interests of the citizens and the taxpayers of the city and much more to do with the interests of the council itself. My constituents are unsatisfied with the way the council continually increases their council tax and provides less and less in terms of basic services. They question why they're paying £150 every month to a council that does not provide adequate service in line with their basic expectations on street cleaning, road and pavement maintenance and protection of green spaces. Residents of newer developments feel that the council isn't interested in providing basic services to them. The council is not willing to adopt areas of these estates for maintenance. It is not willing to maintain their play areas. It's even taken away their litter bins. The impression shared by the opposition is that the administration is building more and more of these developments across the city and the outer western of the places because they regard them as council tax farms they can harvest and exploit. The administration claims promoting a fit-for-purpose council. That's not the view of the public or the opposition. We've heard claims that the council is taking strategic decisions to prevent the salami slicing of services, but every year there are more slices and less salami. We've heard claims that the council administration seeks to protect the interests of the most vulnerable, but that too is at odds with the facts. Councillor Forbes talked about child protection and made some powerful points. I would like to draw councillor Forbes and the rest of council's attention to a recent ruling of the local government's ombudsman in respect of a constituent of mine who concluded that the council's handling of a child protection case involving her family constituted fault resulting in injustice and found that the council's policy on kinship care and child arrangement orders was not only inadequate, it was non-existent. The council has been given three months to review and address this deficiency. I cannot therefore have confidence that the words of the council leader and protecting the most vulnerable are matched by the council administration's actions. And I have the same skepticism about the difference between the council's words and its actions when I read paragraphs four, five, 4.5 and 4.6 of the budget report. Our approach to inequalities in impact assessments, and I quote here, also help us to meet our commitment to a fairness test for key decisions and our legal obligations to demonstrate due regard when making decisions about changes to services. They go beyond our legal obligations and consider impacts beyond the protected characteristics under the Equality Act 2010. Members must read all of the IIAs as having regards to them will assist them in complying with our public sector equality duty when considering the proposals and making decisions. I hope councillor Kemp and other members have read the IIAs, as I have. If they have, they will conclude, as I have, the council's proposals in respect of blue badge holder parking and the shop mobility service fail the fairness test as they directly target disabled people in our city for cuts. This is a deliberate decision of the party opposite and I am not satisfied that it complies with the Equality Act 2010 or the council's public sector equality duty. I serve notice tonight that if these proposals are agreed tonight, the opposition will refer this decision to the Equalities and Human Rights Commission for investigation. It is not the first time the administration has targeted disabled for cuts. They did so previously when they reduced the council tax disregard entitlement for disabled people in favour of those on the lowest incomes. This proposal doesn't even have the justification that it is being done to help other disadvantaged groups. We're aware of significant anxiety on the part of disabled users of these services in the city. We've received many representations from constituents who were shocked and angry at the proposal and there was in fact zero consultation on the shop mobility proposals prior to the cuts being announced. We are aware of the groups such as Disability North. We are also aware that the Labour council in Cambridge has had the humility enough to listen to the concerns of disabled people and the Lib Dem opposition to lift the threat to cut its shop mobility service. We're inviting the administration to do the same tonight by supporting the relevant amendments. Blue badge holders are entitled to park anywhere providing valid badges displayed, including on double yellow lines. And I can advise council that users have told us that the council is no longer prepared to support the blue badge parking provision for disabled people. They intend to do just that. The administration is fond of claiming that it doesn't have the money to protect services due to austerity. In this case, it is not true. The council made £8.5 million surplus from parking income and parking fines last year of £1 million on the previous year. Anyone who can do basic maths should be able to appreciate that the small sums involved in reversing this cut can be met from this year's rise in the parking surplus. We have asked for a clear itemized breakdown of how the council spends the £8.5 million surplus it generates, which is supposed to be allocated to parking provision, to public transport and to highways improvements. We have not had a satisfactory answer and for that reason, we are calling in this debate for the council to be required to do so. Council's opposites have a choice tonight, Lord Mayor. Either they support my amendments for which there is clearly funding available or they can vote to follow the majority party whip and reject it. I suspect that many of the members opposite will not put principle before party loyalty, but I would invite the newer members of council opposite to search their conscience and consider whether they came into politics to vote to support cuts for lifelong disabled people because they choose to do so and not because they have to do so. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Stone. After councillor Frue, would councillor Cot be ready to speak, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I just want to quickly respond to something from councillor Stone when he's talking about having to go to the ombudsman. It is sad when things like that happen, but errors do happen in every local authority. And maybe he should try to take those issues to the relevant cabinet member. However, on that point, we have had a letter from the ombudsman this year to the scrutiny committees saying that we have had the lowest amount of complaints the ombudsman upheld this year compared to previous years and that we're very low compared to other local authorities. So just to clarify that. Now, going back to the earlier history lessons, I appreciate these history lessons as one of the younger members in here. Though I missed the part in the story where there's an international housing crisis and financial system collapse that causes the government's funding to dry up. In fact, the Labour government's balanced budget was balanced from 1997 all the way up to 2007 and strangely, it stopped being balanced. Another thing that's been brought up is about PFIs. But the PFIs, and councillor Ferguson knows that these PFIs were agreed by the Lib Dem council when it was run by them because we talked about them on the budget committee. And I've only been on this council for 10 months, but I'm starting to notice a pattern in terms of what the Lib Dems are saying on reserves, that we have to spend small amounts of the reserves every year. And if we keep doing that, they run out. But each time, they try to keep saying that we need to spend small amounts of reserves as small giveaways, rather than addressing systemic problems that we've got. The amendment from the Lib Dems is scattershot, small crowd pleasers, rather than any kind of strategic overview. There's no vision in it, like councillor Ferguson keeps trying to complain about. You've been given a few hundred pages of strategy. I recommend you read it. So what I really want to talk about is my own ward. Because we've heard from the other side about the woes of some of the wealthier parts of the city. But in the East End, we have very serious problems of poverty that I want to talk about today and why I'm proud to support this budget. Because people in Walker Gate and the rest of the East End have suffered the worst among some of the wards in the city from changes in universal credit and in bedroom tax. And councillor Taylor can say that we're not allowed to lecture them on this, but the party opposite, their MPs propped up the government that brought these in. We've also suffered from the reduction to funding for schools, for after-school and extracurricular services, so that kids are roaming the street with nothing to do and finding trouble for themselves. And all of this is piling on top of the mental health crisis, which is affecting the most deprived communities the most. And it's strange for me to be talking about poverty in 2019. I grew up when the government was focused on eradicating poverty, a government that set promise to end child poverty, while this current government nearly stopped measuring child poverty at all. The Roundtree Foundation 2018 Poverty Report says that 4.1 million children in the UK are living in poverty. 36% of children in Newcastle are living in poverty. We've even had a UN rapporteur coming to this city to look at the scale of the issue. And what's on the mind of the opposition? Dog poo. There is nothing in this amendment from the Lib Dems to address any of the issues of poverty across this city. Not a single one and not a single bit of joint-up thinking that explains how they want to help some of the most vulnerable people in this city. I'm proud of this council's work on social care, on employment, on housing, issues that have not been raised from the other side. They've not proposed any credible alterations to the way this council operates on those issues. I'm still waiting to hear them. I'm proud of this council and I will support the budget.
Thank you, councillor Frue, and thank you for everyone who participated in this debate on the budget. Councillor Hall, you reserve the right to speak. Oh, sorry. I'll take my glasses off again. Sorry, councillor Cot.
That's okay, as long as I'm not forgotten.
Last but not least then, okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor, and thank you very much, council. I've been very interested in the debate and a number of issues that have been raised. This opposition administration certainly has concerns, certainly has concerns about poverty. It has concerns about social disadvantage in this city. And some of the things that were mentioned by the administration did resonate with me, particularly around the costs of care. particularly around the costs of care. I don't think the opposition would find that they would be able to do very much different from the current administration in relation to both adults and children's social care. But I will say this one thing, a number of times in this chamber and elsewhere, I have offered and members of this party, my party have offered to work with the administration in relation to these issues, but you don't ever take up that offer. And you prefer instead to talk the rhetoric of anti-conservative thinking without actually offering an alternative, working together with different shades of opinion to come up with the solutions that are needed. I actually think this is a national problem, but wouldn't it be great if this city, if this council was united in order to address some of these fundamental issues? I think it's really unfortunate that you haven't taken up those offers, maybe you might do after this meeting. Having said that, I think there are a number of things that we can be concerned about. One of the things that was mentioned in this discussion was that our ideas are one-offs. Well, it's your amendments to your original budget proposals which are one-offs with this fund that's come through with additional resource, but that's a one-off, that's a sticking plaster. What we would like to do as an administration, if we were in control, is we would have, after the local elections, an in-year budget review followed by the budget process to actually investigate a more systemic approach to dealing with the budget. As many colleagues have said, you're salami slicing. This is not a vision of what to do for the city, it's just continuing that salami slicing for another three years, with some exceptions, yes, but mainly it is salami slicing. Look at what you want to do with museums, look at what you want to do with libraries, it's salami slicing. It isn't about what is good for those services, you cover it up in transformation, but transformation is conflated with cuts. There is imagination, there is thinking, but the rhetoric isn't always there. And you've conditioned members of staff to talk in the same terms. This is a can't-do council. This council is not set up to actually achieve things because you have set the tone which is we can't do anything. That is very unfortunate, there are some exceptions, I know, and I can see faces which are appalled by my comments, but I think that is largely the case. An issue has been raised in this chamber that we do not care about poverty and yet what are you doing? You are cutting the Newcastle Fund by a hundred thousand pounds, right? This was a fund that the Liberal Democrats, the last administration of this council, set up and we were very proud to do so and we were very pleased that Labour continued to invest and develop this fund subsequently, but we find now you are cutting it and yet we would look to reverse those cuts, but not only that, we would put in an additional a hundred thousand pounds, sorry, additional million pounds as a ring-fenced resource for that service. And the Newcastle Fund is so important because it pump primes the community and voluntary sector who deliver so many wonderful services for us. It gives an opportunity for the communities, for our community to be engaged in services and support, not just support in particular areas, but right across the city and for different types of services. Liberal Democrats would like to see that protected and enhanced. We are the party which cares about disadvantaged people and we are not patronising, we are not patronising as a group of people, we do not use the term vulnerable and overuse that term which you do on that side, because just because you are disadvantaged, it does not mean that you are a vulnerable person. Let's think about these things really carefully, let's think about the rhetoric we use to describe people in terms of what we are actually trying to achieve. We would like to work more with partners to coordinate our support. Someone, I think councillor Forbes, talked about community wealth building earlier, it's a pity we didn't hear more about that before our debate that we had last month, but community wealth building is really important, I think, across the council, we share that particular aim. And we would like to coordinate our support with the other community wealth builders so that we can actually provide a comprehensive approach, the statutory sector, the private sector, the voluntary sector, working together. And wouldn't it be nice with the Newcastle Fund if we could actually prioritise as well activities for young people, which we talked about last month, and also to make sure that small organisations benefit? Because small organisations often say to me that they feel left out, that there isn't funds for them to bid for. We think we should be doing something about that. And I think it's really important that we take that very seriously and we work with our partners in the voluntary sector, in the statutory sector, in the private sector to deliver for those people through that fund and through other resources, really important. It's quite interesting tonight, Lord Mayor, we've heard from a range of different speakers and of course the Liberal Democrats have been referred to for their role in the coalition. Which coalition are we seeing in front of us in the Labour group? We've got the moderates, we've got Momentum, I think you're in coalition with Momentum and who knows, some of you may leave to join an independent group when it comes forward.
Councillor Cot, would you keep to the budget, please?
Yes, and I think it's really, sorry, I'm a little misfired, I think it's really important that we do keep to the issues. As you say, the Newcastle Fund is really important to us, we're really, really positive about the opportunity to review the budget following on from our amendments and we do hope that you will support these amendments and move forward with us for a better future for this authority. We have experience, we have done this before, we've had an in-year review and then a systemic budget review and we are happy to help the administration to achieve that and to achieve the targets that we all want to achieve for people as we move into the future. So thank you very much, Lord Mayor.
Thank you councillor Cot. Councillor Hall, you reserve the right to speak on the amendments.
Somewhat startled by the council leader's disrespect for this chamber, to be honest. I know it's been a difficult month for him and his position, but there's no need for that really. To councillor Higgins, I say, I love this city, it welcomed me in as a country bumpkin and gave me a home. It is friendly, vibrant, diverse, enthralling place to live and I count myself extraordinarily lucky to stand in this chamber and serve it. That does not mean I have to swallow this budget, nor the offensive misappropriation of religious terminology by councillor Dunn, nor the slanderous claims by councillor Powers. I look forward to giving him Newcastle Liberal Democrat manifesto as he so desires. In the twenty seventeen budget, council invested nearly thirty million in capital projects for neighbourhoods and inequalities. This only represented forty percent to community projects. This year, the planned investment prediction was worse, with less than twenty percent investment in neighbourhoods and inequalities and nearly twenty-five percent to be invested in business interest from the general fund. This council is not investing in communities. It has been taken in by the allure of the accelerated development zone and invested the vast majority of its money in the city centre, ignoring what most residents care about, which is the communities in which they live. To paraphrase, invest in our communities to save our communities. Labour argue, oh, it's all prudential, we pay back and increase the revenue. Yes, and councillor Forbes tells us we have to wait twenty years. We stand in one of the great economic projects, South and East Blocks will be rented out to the courts, more than forty million in investment, but the customer service centre closed for good. Yet despite this, we still have no tenants and no rent from those blocks. Thirty million is coming in twenty years, but that investment could be having transformative effects on communities now, not turning a profit later. Our investment should be aimed where it is needed most, in local communities, community hubs that are thriving with small community businesses and volunteer associations and generating income and not silent like in Kenton and Gosforth. Refurbished roads and pavements, protecting elderly and disadvantaged users from avoidable accidents and improving traffic and encouraging cycling. Improved park and ride provision, green bus grants, a array of other measures to tackle air quality crisis without punitive charging. This council is failing low school communities. Consultation with anyone on cross-funding formula too late and that prevented the release of funds for the blue badge provision. Shop mobility users were never consulted on altering the charging structure or the service provision, in fact, nobody was. And the pump priming for the voluntary sector is woefully undersfunded despite the promises of many years. The council does not strive to make services more efficient, but continuously cuts and expects behaviour change to come from the same failed strategies. Behaviour change requires long-term funding, investment and planning, not one-off funds that would be economically illiterate. They waste eight hundred thousand on a leaflet scheme and sprinkling which have failed the last few times, what evidence that they will work this time? This money should be spent, as we have detailed, temporarily protecting services with funding gap whilst allowing new service proposals to be drawn up, trials concluded and residents engaged in proper consultation. This is the prudence that Labour purposely ignore in our proposals. Labour must stop deciding the outcome before they know the facts. There is nine hundred thousand in the Great North City Fund, yet only a quarter of it has been spent after two years. We challenge cabinet members to present fully itemised plans to scrutiny. This is seed funding, but it cannot again be tied up in attracting business and sports when communities and deprived areas desperately need this investment. Reserves are up twenty million from last year's predictions. If councillor Faulkner was still here, I'm sure he would be shocked. Labour's reserves policy is a mockery and must be rethought. We would introduce a five-year cap on earmarking to bring transparency and stop Labour stuffing millions down the back of the sofa. On joined-up thinking, how do you account for the consultation on Brunswick tip and then announce the closure two days later? Yes councillor Kemp, closure. Labour once again tries to use the coalition government and more concerningly the plight of vulnerable children to deflect scrutiny on their local spending. An abrogation of responsibilities, as councillor Kemp says, just like blaming an international housing crisis. Labour runs white-hot with righteous indignation, yet the last Labour government was the one that drove this country over the edge. Four billion, botched gold sale, five hundred billion, bank bailouts, eight billion, illegal Iraq war, triple the yearly local government's spend. Lib Dems took the option to repair Labour's broken economy, mitigate the damage of their war and prevent the worst urges of the Tories. Hard choices were made, but we strove to protect the vulnerable, raising the income allowance for low wage, introducing shared parental leave and helping disadvantaged children through the pupil premium. Our amendments are a demonstration of proactive thought, purpose and vision for this city. The challenge to this administration, show us your imagination, your drive and yes, your care for this city and stop hiding. The people of Newcastle will not allow you to look them in the eye and take this city for granted. We are ready to give the city the leadership and hope it deserves.
Thank you councillor Hall. The guillotine has fallen as it's after nine o'clock. Councillor McCarthy, you reserve the right to speak. There you are.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, I came prepared. Thank you, colleagues, we've had a very interesting debate, I think. We've had eight years of austerity and there's no end in sight. And from this administration, we use the evidence that we're able to collect to make sure that the proposals that we put forward can be delivered, continue to provide services and protect the most vulnerable against the savagery of the Conservatives and previous coalition governments. Lord Mayor, austerity isn't just about what the council does. We see austerity every day in this city, as some of my colleagues have mentioned. Wendy talked about the austerity and the impact on schools, other colleagues have talked about the impact in their wards. We've seen the impact of universal credit that takes away a hundred and twenty-nine million, or I'm not sure what Amber Rudd's proposals do today, we'll need to check that out, but on the last report that came to cabinet was a hundred and twenty-nine million pounds from citizens in this city. We've got food banks, I'm really proud that we've got food banks supporting the most vulnerable in our society, but that is our city's response to protecting the really vulnerable. We have been proud, actually, Lord Mayor, you mentioned it tonight, we're really proud that we're dealing with period poverty. It's International Women's Day this week. I'm really pleased that we can do something for period poverty, but we shouldn't have to volunteer and contribute to that. That should be something that we could do if we had the resources in order to deliver that. We've had three hundred and twenty-seven million pounds worth of cuts. And Lord Mayor, before I get to some of the details in my speech, I'd like to respond to some of the comments that we've heard tonight. Councillor Taylor referred to shared services. Actually, you need to understand that you can't do shared services unless both partners agree to deliver them. It's a bit tricky to tell other local authorities what they ought to be doing because we could all save money. You've got to do that in partnership, so some of our work is really effective and done in partnership. The work that I do on financial inclusion is working with partners across the city and is delivering for the most vulnerable in our city. Lord Mayor, the colleagues who raised their casework, we've had several speeches about casework, can I ask not necessarily to wait until you have budget meeting at council to ask about casework, please pick it up with the appropriate officers. And I'm sure our transport team would be delighted to give a briefing to all the councillors from Fordham and Gosforth and the surrounding areas about Blue House and Hadriks Mill. And might I remind the Lib Dems that actually in two thousand and nine, they agreed the proposals for those two transport schemes, but they never asked for the funding nor did they deliver them. We're doing it from this side of the council chamber. And actually councillor Stone, we're not just building in the outer west, quite a lot of our homes are in brownfield sites. Actually, that's another area of failure, I think, from the Lib Dem administration when they're in charge, Lord Mayor, they failed to deliver in Benwell and Scottswood. We are actually putting those houses there, building on those brownfield sites and making sure that the people who live in them are well-supported and making sure they've got other facilities around them. On the blue badge proposals, Lord Mayor, we do have to, as the information in front of you says, we do have to have statutory consultation. What we've heard so far is let's just not do it, let's just subsidise it for another year. We will have to do further work, it will have to all be considered again in the round. Officers think that about two-thirds of the blue badge holders who use the city centre come from outside the city. And actually indeed, the people that councillor Kemp is in discussion with are thinking about different ways of offering that service or how we might look at those proposals, coming forward with positive ideas rather than just saying, let's save it for a year, kick the can down the road and deal with it next year. And councillor Cot challenged us about we're not being proud of what we do. I'm really proud of what we achieve in adult social care. I'm really proud we're adapting to change to deliver children's services in this city when it's the most challenging we've seen in decades. I'm really proud, Jed talked about the work we're doing on creating jobs for this city. In my portfolio, I'm really proud of what we've done on domestic violence, on homelessness. We do those big things that we regularly talk about, but I'm also really proud that we introduced a pound fair for under nineteen-year-olds. I think that's a really, really good approach that we've taken. So from big ideas to small ideas, we're doing it all. So, Lord Mayor, we've made efficiency savings, we've stopped doing things, we've changed the way we deliver services, we've transformed our offers, we've saved over a million in management costs, we've cut back on support in some areas, we've moved to digital and we're working on our website, yet we've still got sixty million pounds to save over the next three years. And actually, the so-called fair funding proposals that we've just responded to mean that we're really, really unsure what the future will bring. We've listened to residents, Lord Mayor, and to others who've responded to the consultation, we've changed some of the proposals. I think we would want to place on record all of the colleagues who responded to that consultation. I'm actually really proud of the budget tool. I know some colleagues across the council chamber will think it's not nuanced enough, but I think depreciate, you know, it does what it tries to do, honestly, offer the opportunity to residents to understand that if you spend more money on adult social care, you have to spend less somewhere else. I think that's fairly straightforward.
Thank you.
I am opposed to the amendments, Lord Mayor, because I do really believe that one, two and four definitely just postpone hard decisions for a year. Berenzi, as councillor Kemp has made very clear, will be part of review. And indeed councillor Cot talked about the moving reserves into Newcastle Fund, Lord Mayor, does not make sense, we already fund statutory support in that sector. This Labour administration is using one-off money to help us deliver on our priorities, not to provide services. Austerity is a political choice and it isn't over, I move the budget as it stands.
I now call on councillor Forbes to reply.
Well, I have to say, I've greatly enjoyed this evening's episode of Lib Dems Got Talent. There are clearly some auditions going on for a vacancy that might occur in the next few months. Some of them are clearly hoping that opportunity knocks, but sadly for most of them, any dream will do. And I never thought I would say in this council chamber that I missed David Faulkner, but my goodness, his absence here has revealed a huge lack of understanding in the opposition group. Let me give councillor Ferguson some basic lessons in financial literacy because he presented an alternative budget that proposed the use of one-off funds to pay for day-to-day services. Now, I know he's Chair of Governors at the Thomas Hepburn Academy and if the head teacher came to him and said, we've got a great plan to fund a whole load of new teachers, but we're going to sell the minibus to pay their salaries, how long would it be before he was starting to have to sell the furniture to pay the extra costs that he'd created? And I have also felt this evening, a little bit as I've been trapped in a student union debating society, the longer the evening goes on, the more the ridiculous the contributions we've heard from the opposition. Not least, this amendment around scrapping the spring clean. We've heard all sorts of contorted passionate arguments about why that would be the wrong thing to spend one-off monies on. But can I just refer the opposition to the budget amendment that they moved last year, which was to put an amount of money into a one-off spring clean? Exactly the opposite of what you're arguing this year. However, consistency, let's be fair, was never your strong point, was it? In fact, I still have yet to find one of your strong points. This, Lord Mayor, is a serious situation, where we have a serious financial challenge facing us as a council. This budget sets out how we seek to improve the life chances of people in this city at a time of extraordinary financial stress for public finances. And yet, all we've heard this evening from the opposition is carping. No plan, no vision, no clue and no shame about their role in the coalition. No understanding about the difference between capital and revenue and ring-fence grants and reserves of borrowing. Complete financial illiteracy. So the choice is clear between an opposition with no clue or a budget which sets out a plan for bringing national and international sporting events to our city, to build more homes, to bring investment to create jobs and to move our city forward by being a dynamic, forward-thinking organisation, leading our city through challenging times. This is a budget, Lord Mayor, which represents the best of Labour values in action in the most difficult of circumstances. And the people know, because everywhere now is talking about the scale of austerity and the challenges that austerity poses. We are realistic and honest about the challenges that our city faces and this budget sets forward a plan and a vision to get us through the next few difficult years. I urge colleagues to reject the hypocritical headline-grabbing amendments of the opposition and support the main and substantive budget so that we can move forward this evening.
We will now move to a named vote on each of the amendments in turn. Please make sure you're in the allocated seats and not sitting in the wrong spot. Yes, I understand, and we'll take them one by one. Amendment number one, is that agreed?
Shall we repeat that one?
Sorry. Okay. Amendment one, is that agreed?
Yes.
Okay, yes, okay, but we need, everyone is voting, we do have a vote, yes. Okay, that amendment is not carried. Amendment number two, is that agreed?
No.
A vote, please. Oh, I do apologise, a named vote I'll need to ask you for. Can we vote on amendment number three, please? Amendment number four, please vote on that. Amendment number five, please vote. When we clear the board. That's not agreed, then. Can we vote on the... Oh, sorry, you're going to clear that. Can we then vote, please, on the original motion, original proposal on the budget, please? Thank you very much, and that is carried. So we now need to deal with the remaining items of business in accordance with standing order number 19. I need to ask the mover of each item. In progress, item number eight, councillor Bell, can I ask you to, please?
Lord Mayor, I would have been delighted to discuss this report tonight.
Just a moment, councillor Bell, I'm being asked point of... Mr councillor Cock.
Lord Mayor, we're really concerned that this important report, which will deal with the development allocations across the city, has been brought to this budget meeting and we have had no time to debate this. I think we in the opposition find this appalling and would request, if at all possible, for this to be held over to the next meeting. If not, then I am greatly displeased that we are in this situation and speak for other colleagues as well.
Please hold on a bit longer, councillor Bell.
Lord Mayor, I think it would be helpful if we could clarify whether that was a request to...
Okay, the guillotine has fallen, but is it to suspend the effect of the guillotine? Is that what is being requested?
Spend it for 10 minutes. Then we have to defer this item. It's too important to not be discussed. It should not have come to this meeting, given that it was a budget meeting and it was going to go on forever. It should have gone either last month or next month.
Procedure state that it's down to the mover to actually say whether or not they wish for it to be postponed or dealt with tonight.
Lord Mayor, as councillor Bell has set out, it is understanding orders, it is a decision for the mover of the report as to whether or not it is dealt with formally at the meeting, without any debate, or whether it is deferred to the next meeting. That is the arrangements of standing orders.
Thank you for that guidance. Lord Mayor, with that being said, I was looking forward to discussing this tonight, but I feel confident and I'm somewhat amazed that the opposition say that they haven't had time to actually look over this document because it's been out for public consultation on two occasions. We also have an opportunity, a time window for the inspectorate, the planning inspectorate, to go over this plan in public, so that's another opportunity and there will be a further report brought back to council. So, Lord Mayor, I move it to the vote this evening.
Do we have a second for this? Thank you, councillor McCarthy.
Lord Mayor, we are not in great disagreement with it, but we reserve the right to discuss it.
Just councillor Huddart, understanding orders, that's not something that's in your gift.
No, no, I didn't mean a one doggy. Lord Mayor, on a point of personal explanation, if I may just add clarity, we understand this has gone through a process, but we're at the end of the process and council needs to be able to debate this particular issue, having had all the information brought to us from the various stages that councillor Bell refers to. Is he afraid of democratic debate? Because that is the implication of what he is suggesting.
Lord Mayor, it's not that whatsoever. Again, it's just posturing. We went through a procedural matter tonight, we've came to the end of council, guillotine has fallen. It's not my fault that people have taken useful time that could have been used throughout this. The process has been undergone, we are where we are now and the planning inspectorate has a window. This is so important for the city that we cannot delay this until possibly next year before it gets in front of a planning inspectorate. So, Lord Mayor, I'll follow the procedure.
As this has been moved and seconded, is it agreed? Or do we need a vote on it? Okay. May we move to a vote, then? So the recommendations are agreed by a majority vote. We'll move on to item number eight, questions by members. There are two written questions on the agenda and the replies have been circulated, they're also displayed in the fia. There are no changes to appointments to committees this month. Can I ask the mover of motion on the people's vote whether you wish to consider it without debate or whether to...
Yes, we would do it to deal with it tonight, Lord Mayor, because it will run out of time by the time the next council...
Okay. So as amended then. Can I, for the record, just confirm that it is seconded by councillor Forbes?
Lord Mayor, I second the motion and propose the amendment.
Thank you. So is the amendment agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. Item number 12, notice of motion, increased funding for public health. Councillor McGinnis is not here as well, so, okay. Is that a... Next meeting? Okay.
I completely agree with the orders amended for people's vote, we just agree the amendment.
Thank you, misunderstood, thank you very much. Okay, okay. So with those decisions, this meeting comes to an end. The next meeting will be on the 3rd of April of 2019. Thank you very much indeed for all you've done tonight, thank you.